All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May 13th regular scheduled meeting. We will start at six o'clock. First up, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Rose, will you please let us in that?
Please, Dan. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Perfect. Thank you for that, sir. Next up, we will have roll call.
Councilmember Busby.
Here.
Councilmember Pride, here. Councilmember Hanson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Here.
Mayor Hudson.
Present.
Thank you.
Uh, City Manager, any changes to the agenda?
Sorry, decisions, decisions.
There are no changes.
Okay, perfect. Next up ceremonial matters. We have a total of six proclamations tonight. Um, first one will be read by Councilmember Busby for National NASCAR Day.
City of Willows proclamation, National NASCAR Day. Whereas the National Association for Stock Car Auto Racing, better known as NASCAR, has become a hallmark of American culture, uniting fans across the country with thrilling races, remarkable drivers, and a strong spirit of community. And whereas NASCAR Day, celebrated annually on the third Friday in May, serves not only as a tribute to the sport of stock car racing, but also as a day dedicated to charitable giving and community support. And where- whereas NASCAR Day brings together drivers, fans, sponsors, and the media to honor the legacy and excitement of the sport, while raising funds and awareness for important causes through events held at speedways, businesses, and homes across the nation. And whereas Thunder Hill Raceway Park, located right here in Willows, is a key part of our community and motorsports culture, providing a world-class venue for racing enthusiasts, professional drivers, and charitable events. And whereas Thunder Hill Raceway Park not only supports the growth of motorsports, but also plays an important role in engaging youth, promoting safe driving practices, and contributing to the local economy through tourism effects that- in events that reflect the spirit of NASCAR. Now, therefore, be it resolved, I, Matt Busby, on behalf of Evan Hudson, Mayor of the City of Willows, and on behalf of the City- Willows City Council and the citizens of Willows, do hereby proclaim Friday, May 16th, 2025, as National NASCAR Day in the City of Willows, and encourage all residents to join in the celebration, whether by attending local events, watching a race, or supporting the charitable efforts that make this day meaningful. And witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and official seal this 13th day of May, 2025.
Thank you.
Dave? It makes a lot more sense.
Our next proclamation will be presented by Councilmember Thomas, National Learn to Swim Day.
City of Willows proclamation, National Learn to Swim Day. Whereas National Learn to Swim Day, observed on the third Saturday in May, serves as a timely reminder to the importance of water safety and swim education, especially in the summer season approaching. And whereas swimming is not only a fun and healthy activity, but also an essential life skill that can help prevent tragedy. According to the Centers of Disease Control and Prevention, drowning is the second-leading cause of unintentional injury-related death for children ages one to 14. And whereas, by raising awareness and encouraging participation in swim lessons, we can work together to reduce drowning risks and empower children and adults with confidence in and around water. And whereas, local resources like Willow's High School Pool play a vital role in supporting swim education and providing the community with access to safe, supervised environments for learning and recreation. And whereas, in support of swim education, the Willow's Unified School District will offer swim lessons this season, this summer, on July 16th, 18th, 23rd, and 25th. And whereas, the City of Willow supports families in taking part in fun educational swim activities, such as enrolling in lessons, visiting the pool, learning CPR, and celebrating water safety with community events. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Richard Thomas, Vice Mayor, on behalf of Evan Hudson, Mayor of the City of Willows, and on behalf of the Willow City Council and the citizens of Willows, do hereby proclaim May 17th, 2025, as National Learn Swim Day in the City of Willows, and encourage all residents to recognize the importance of swim education, utilize local resources like the Willow's High School Pool, and take part in water safety activities that will help keep our community safe and confident around water. And witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and official seal this 13th day of May, 2025. I understand we have Michelle Udell here.
I want to thank you for this recognition. It's awesome. We're excited to be able to provide those swim lessons through our summer camp. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have National Poppy Day, uh, read by Councilmember Pride.
You. City of Willow's proclamation, National Poppy Day. Whereas, since World War I, the red poppy has served as a powerful symbol of remembrance and hope, honoring the sacrifice of those who have died in service to our nation and supporting those who continue to serve. And whereas, National Poppy Day is observed on the Friday before Memorial Day, following this year on May 23rd, 2025, as a time to recognize the extraordinary courage and selflessness of the men and women of the United States Armed Forces. And whereas, the Veterans of Foreign Wars and Auxiliary distributes red poppies each year and invites the public to wear them as a tribute to fallen heroes and as a visible expression of support for living veterans and active-duty service members. And whereas, donations received in exchange for poppies directly support the rehabilitation and well-being of veterans, military personnel, and their families, providing vital resources and assistance. And whereas, it is fitting and proper that all Americans, by wearing a red poppy, honor those who have given their lives in the cause of liberty and reflect upon the enduring cost of our freedoms. Now, therefore, be it resolved, I, Lori Pride, on behalf of Evan Hudson, Mayor of the City of Willows, and on behalf of the Willow City Council and the citizens of Willows, May 23rd, 2025, as National Poppy Day, and encourage all citizens to wear a red poppy as a symbol of remembrance and gratitude to those who have served and sacrificed for our country. Thank you. So, who would be here accepting this proclamation on behalf of the veterans?
Perfect. Next up, we have a proclamation regarding Memorial Day. City of Willow's proclamation, Memorial Day. Whereas Memorial Day stands on a solemn and sacred day of remembrance for the men and women of the United States Armed Forces who gave their lives in defense of our nation, our values, and our freedoms. And whereas, since the time of the Civil War, Americans have gathered on this day to honor the memory of our fallen heroes, placing flowers and flags on graves, holding ceremonies, and observing moments of silence in their tribute. And whereas, the freedoms we enjoy today have been preserved through the ultimate sacrifice of generations of service members who face dangers and death on battlefields around the world. And whereas Memorial Day is a time for all citizens to reflect on the high cost of liberty, to express deep gratitude to those who have died in service, and to support the families they have left behind. And whereas, it is our solemn duty to ensure the memory of their sacrifice endures through the acts of remembrance, community service, and continued commitment to the principles they defended. Now, therefore, I, Evan Hudson, Mayor of the City of Willows, and on behalf of the Willow City Council and the citizens of Willows, do hereby proclaim Memorial Day, Monday, May 26th, 2025, and call upon all residents to honor our fallen military heroes in reverence, gratitude, and respect. I further encourage all to participate in ceremonies and acts of remembrance in their community and to pause at 3:00 PM local time for the national moment of remembrance. And witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and official seal this 13th day of May, 2025. Who am I proposing this one to? Our next proclamation is, May is Wildfire Awareness Month. City of Willow's proclamation, Wildfire Awareness Month. Whereas wildfires pose a significant threat to lives, property, natural resources, and the environment across our state and nation. And their frequency and intensity have increased due to factors such as drought, climate change, and expanding development into fire-prone areas. And whereas wildfire prevention, preparedness, and education are essential components of public safety. And it is imperative that individuals, families, communities, and organizations take proactive steps to reduce risk and enhance resilience. And whereas firefighters, emergency personnel, and land management agencies work tirelessly to protect people, property, and ecosystems from the devastating impacts of wildfires, often at great personal risk. And whereas, Wildfire Awareness Month provides an opportunity to recognize their dedication and to encourage all residents to become more informed and take action, such as creating defensible space, using fire-safe landscaping practices, and preparing emergency evacuation plans. And whereas, collaboration among local, state, tribal, and federal agencies, as well as private organizations and the public, is vital in advancing wildfire preparedness and building fire-adapted communities. Now, therefore, be it resolved, I, Evan Hudson, Mayor of the City of Willows, and on behalf of the Willow City Council and the citizens of Willows, do hereby proclaim May 2025 as Wildfire Awareness Month. Nourage all citizens to learn about wildfire risk, take steps to protect their homes and communities, and support the efforts of those who work to keep us safe from wildfire danger. And witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and official seal this 13th day of May, 2025.
Uh, I just wanted to say a couple of quick words. Uh, I think it's pretty fitting that it's uh, Wildfire Awareness Month when we got weed abatement on the agenda tonight. Um, weed abatement uh, is one of our big um, tasks that we do every year. Um, but it really does have a benefit. Um, and it really does help with the um, wildfire mitigation efforts that we do in the city, and it gives everybody some benefits. I know the community, um, a lot of times when they're calling to let us know how uh, they feel about the notice that they got, um, doesn't reflect that, but there is a lot of benefit to the program, and it's a big reason why um, our portion of the county tends to have smaller grass fires than other places in surrounding areas. So, um, it's important. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
All right, our next proclamation, Public Works Week, presented by Councilmember Hanson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's it's an honor and pleasure to uh, read this proclamation on behalf of the City Council to our outstanding Public Works team, and so our dedicated members are here tonight. So, thank you for everything that you do. So, much appreciated. City of Willows proclamation, National Public Works Week. Whereas, public work services are vital to the health, safety, comfort, and quality of life for the residents of the City of Willows. And whereas, the work performed by public works professionals includes planning, building, operating, and maintaining transportation, water, wastewater, stormwater, public buildings, and other infrastructure essential to our communities, sustainability, and resilience. And whereas, the City of Willows Public Works Department plays a crucial role in serving the needs of the community through dedication, technical expertise, and quiet reliability. And whereas, this year's theme for National Public Works Week, People, Purpose, Presence, highlights the three cornerstone ideals that motivate public works professionals to serve in their communities every day. Meaning the needs of people gives public works its sense of purpose. Often, the work goes unseen because when things function smoothly, public works is invisible. Yet, with or without recognition, public works is always present, working in the background to protect and enhance the quality of life for all. And whereas, it is important to recognize and celebrate the contributions of the dedicated men and women of the City of Willow's Public Works Department, and to raise public awareness of the vital role that they play. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Gary Hanson, Councilmember of the City of Willows, on behalf of Mayor Hudson, the Willow City Council, and the citizens of Willows, do hereby proclaim the week of May 18th to 24, 2025, as National Public Works Week in the City of Willows, and encourage all residents to recognize the essential work of our public works professionals who keep our city running safely and efficiently every day. And witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and official seal this 13th day of May, 2025. Signed, Evan Hudson, Mayor.
Thank you.
Why you guys?
Do you like to present our Public Works team?
Yay!
I just want to say that when you look at this Public Works team, this is who we have for a city the size of Willows. And to me, it's amazing, as you guys walk out the door probably, how great of a job you do. Um, so thank you so much that, to the smallest detail, you guys take care of stuff, and it's really, really appreciated.
Small but mighty.
Small but mighty.
I just want to add to that real quick. Lori, I couldn't agree more. Um, we've got a small team that does a lot of work around here with with equipment that's that's aged and beat up, and we can't appreciate them anymore. And just want to say that we've got a a little barbecue show and tell at the Public Works um, uh, down at their shop on Ash Street, coming up Thursday, the 22nd, from 11:00 to 1:00. Uh, the Public's invited to that. Basically, we kind of do a runaround, show you guys the equipment and all the things that Public Works handles, from 150,000 liter feet of sewer line to street sweeping and everything in between. So, we'd love to see you guys come out and uh, any of the Public if they can make it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you. Thank you to our unsung heroes.
Yeah, again, uh, before I move on to the next item, thank you to everyone that came up and was uh, here for the presentations and to receive a proclamation. Uh, each proclamation stands for something, and each group does something amazing for our community in one way or another. So, thank you all. Next on the agenda, we have item 6A, which is a presentation by HDL Sales Tax Presentation, or is our HDL Sales Tax Presentation.
Just quickly, uh, before we get started with that, I just wanted to mention that um, Councilmember Pride, sometime ago, had asked if we could have a presentation about how um, exactly our um, sales tax monitoring um, works. We um, use the services of HDL to monitor our sales tax and make sure the city's getting all the taxes that they're supposed to. Um, and there's, I don't know the secret sauce on how they do that, but they're going to share that with us tonight. And um, Matt Hinderleider, I hope I'm saying that right.
You are, thank you.
Yeah, obviously a principal at HDL companies, because the last, the name of the company is Hinderleider as well. So, he will be presenting uh, to the council this evening on our sales tax monitoring. With that, Matt, take it away.
Well, well, thank you very much all for your time and the opportunity to share a little bit of the the secret sauce. Uh, so I lead the Sales and Use Tax Recovery or Discovery Team here at HDL. Uh, my company provides a variety of services to local government agencies, uh, in including assistance with managing really important revenue streams, such as sales tax and property tax. And we also provide assistance with business license administration. Uh, you know, one component of our sales tax management services to help our clients ensure that they are receiving all the local sales tax to which they're titled. Errors can sometimes occur, either at the state level or sometimes at the taxpayer level. It actually causes the wrong agency to receive credit for local tax being reported. So, for example, Orland may receive money that that belongs to Willow's instead. So, uh, our our mission or our goal is to go out and identify those type of errors and then work with the state uh, to get them corrected so that our clients realize that additional revenue. I have a brief presentation, uh, I'll step through, kind of explaining our processes, our systems, and then more than happy to answer any questions that uh, that you have for me. Go ahead and share my see, I it's asking you to make a request to share my screen. There we go. Okay, so uh, can can everybody see my screen?
No.
Okay, uh, how about this?
Oh, wait, almost.
Oh, okay, great. Thank you. So, uh, you know, sales tax allocation errors uh, fall into a couple of different sort of categories or buckets. Um, you know, first of all, there there are registration errors, and that's essentially there's an error or a problem with the taxpayer's permit on file with the state that caused local tax to flow to the wrong agency. So, a couple of examples that we might see are just simply things like a company moved, changed locations, and never notified the state that they moved, or that that didn't get processed correctly. And particularly now in the age where everything's, you know, electronic filing and email and notifications, uh, that a physical location moved may not be readily apparent or even noticed for quite a while. Uh, it could be that a taxpayer is is operating in one location, doing well, being successful, and opens a second store or a second outlet, but doesn't uh, doesn't add that location to their permit. That could cause money to flow to the wrong, the wrong agency. Uh, we see misallocations to an owner's home address or to a business office, where that has been coded as the place of sale, where in actuality, it's simply an admin location. Uh, and finally, uh, you know, each city in California is assigned a five-digit tax area code that tells the state where to allocate the funds. And sometimes, even though the state has the address and everything else about the business correct, uh, they they may have assigned a wrong tax area code due to confusing boundaries or some zip code overlaps, and uh, that can cause an error. Moving on from there, we we get to a little bit more complex errors that are are more having to do with the taxpayers' reporting. In other words, their permit's fine, the registration's okay, but there's an an error in one of the the supporting schedules that they file along with their quarterly sales tax return. And that could cause a number of different types of errors. Uh, we could see money flowing to the county pools as if it's a use tax transaction instead of a direct allocation to to our client. Uh, sometimes tax preparers just make a a transposition error, where literally they just add the money on the wrong line of a form, uh, and that could cause issues. And then there are some other opportunities where uh, very large transactions, there's some special rules that allow for direct allocation under circum- certain circumstances, and if those are not um, followed, then that that could create an issue. So, how do we find these problems? So, let's start with the with our discovery for registration errors, the more simple of the two. Uh, we have a variety of of systems that we deploy. Essentially, what we try to do is is get a good inventory of what businesses are operating out there within our client agency, and then we can compare that to what the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration, the CDTFA, shows in the city. So, we we mash the two databases together and uh, look for exceptions, look for instances where a given business does not seem to be on the city's allocation roles. Now, that doesn't mean they're not registered period. It just means they may be coded to the wrong place. Uh, in order to do this type of work, uh, we have a a unique kind of advantage that that was uh, in that uh, we provide business license administration as well to the city. So, using that data to double-check what CDTFA has on file and and keeping keeping tabs on updates is really super helpful uh, on both ends, uh, in making sure that everything is falling in line correctly. Uh, we also purchase data from a variety of uh, of private sector firms. Uh, it's essentially telephone directory, but organized in a way that we can sort by zip code uh, or or city boundaries. Uh, the one that we're currently using is from a company called Data Axel USA. Used to be Info USA, and and we can download a city at a time. They're listing, scrub it down, clean it up, focus on just sales tax generators, and compare that to what the state thinks is operating in the city. Uh, the, you know, we talked about tax area code issues, essentially what we would call a boundary error. Uh, we double-check not only uh, not only Willow's, but all the surrounding area. Uh, and we we verify each and every tax area code assignment for given businesses. Uh, the CDTFA has a really cool uh, application on their website. It's ESRI-based, and and it's very good at kind of indicating proper jurisdictional boundaries. So, we run our data through that system and check for uh, check for any errors and and again, work with the state to document them and get them corrected. Uh, so, that kind of covers a kind of uh, registration errors. With respect to reporting errors, you know, we we get data quarterly from the CDTFA, and every time we get a new download, we start into a a whole host of uh, internal reviews against that data. Uh, we, you know, they, we sometimes it's referred to as quarterly distribution report. So, we we have automated queries that we run the data through to filter and isolate potential leads. We also have senior analysts that spend a lot of time manually looking at that output as well as as just the data as a whole to further isolate potential errors. Uh, we look at the county pools. So, that's particularly important for an agency like Willow's. Uh, being among the smaller agencies, you know, it is the smallest agency in Glen County. Uh, if my, if money flows into the county pools, uh, the City of Willow's only gets about 25% of those allocations. Whereas if it's, if it should be direct reporting to the city, it it should be 100%. So, we review county pool data, not even in just in Glen County, but all all uh, in the surrounding area. And we look for instances where that could point to a direct allocation opportunity for the city. Uh, finally, I talked about these special reporting programs, two main types. Uh, again, this is applying to use tags. Uh, the the first is looking at a single use tax transaction over $500,000. The state has some special rules where that can be directly allocated, what they call the jurisdiction of first functional use. So, we we look for those, we work backwards from those allocations to figure out what that transaction was and try to get that directly allocated where we can. Uh, not as common, but we Not as common, but we also keep an eye on very large construction projects. Your general contractors doing day-to-day work, residential work, or small jobs do allocate via the county pools, but on a very large project, and the threshold there is $5 million and up for any individual subcontractor, there can be some direct allocation opportunities. And it's great to get in on those projects as early as possible, get job site subpermits issued to the contractors, and then we have now a vehicle to report that local tax directly. And finally, I just, I just wanted to talk a little bit about kind of the difference between allocation of local tax amongst agencies and compliance work. You know, we're, our efforts are focused on allocation of local tax, ensuring that what has already been paid into the system gets credited to the proper jurisdiction. There's little or no direct impact on the business community. It's a very business-friendly process. And any outreach we do to verify, you know, any errors here is very light touch upon your business community. The, you know, it being a state-administered tax, we do not have the authority to really delve into books and records and assess compliance. If our audits come across or our use come across a business that just seems clearly out of line with what we would expect, we can work with the state through, essentially it's a public tax evasion hotline. We can provide the information that we have and request their assistance. Now, they, they may or may not initiate an audit, and if they do, they are not going to directly share the results with us. But we will see further down the line if that referral translates into any revenue for the city. So that completes my presentation. Again, happy to address any questions, concerns that you have about the work we're doing.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
I just want to say thank you for the presentation, and then, yes, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Well, under your county pool allocations, now that we're collecting a higher sales tax that's different than what's collected into county and collected in Orland, would that be a methodology that you would use to determine who gets that tax?
The county pool allocation is essentially a formula-driven system that looks at Willow's, not Bradley Burns, the 1% local sales tax as compared to the county as a whole. It doesn't include any additional district or transactions taxes, but that ratio of transactions, or transactions tax, I'm sorry, Bradley Burns against the AP County as a whole, is what they use to determine that. Not sure that answered your question. I hope so.
I don't, I don't know if I understood that, but if we collected on a $10,000 purchase at eight and three quarters, and it goes to the county pool that only collects seven and a quarter,
Yeah.
there's one and a half cent that's floating out there. And from what I just understood, what you told me, that it gets blended in with the county in Orland and segregated that way.
So, you know, I understand your question now a little bit better. So the, of the eight and a quarter, eight and a half, whatever the percentage is, there's only a 1% component that is the Bradley Burns local sales and use tax. And that is what gets allocated either directly or via the county pools. Any additional measures that would, that would impact the overall tax rate are not impacted by this type of review or work. We do also monitor transaction tax districts to make sure that they are getting the proper allocation. But it's a, it's a different process and a different methodology that the state uses to allocate that. So regardless of the overall tax rate, the money in the county pools is 1% out of the eight and a quarter, seven and three quarters, whatever that case may be.
Clear as mud to me. Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? I don't remember, Hans, any questions?
No, great presentation. Thank you for the information. Back in, just real briefly, just for historical reference, back in 2009, that was a, that was a very good year for rice production. The rice price was, was good that year, one of the few, one of the few years. So our, our local tax base was off, though. So we hired your firm, the city council hired your firm, and you discovered that one of our local tractor dealerships had recently been purchased. And the, the taxes should have been allocated, the city of Willow's had been allocated to the city where, where the corporate headquarters was. And your firm, your firm found those monies and righted the ship. So good work. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Very happy to hear that.
You explained, you explained how you do that right here. So, so thank you. Yeah, I'm with Rick with the 25% allocation. I'll, I'll have to talk to you offline at some point and get a, get a little better picture of how that works. But I understand the 1%, but I just, yeah, I don't want to take too up time here now, but I do have some questions about how that works countywide on that 25% pool. But anyways, but thank you. Thank you for the information.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Very, thank you very much. More than happy to sit down with you anytime and further go through and step through how that county pool dollars are distributed.
Thank you.
Questions?
Just one question. I'm curious, as you look at our business license program and compare that to the sales tax data, and then you indicated you had other programs that you can also use. Are you finding that our business license database is fairly accurate? Or are you finding that there's a number of businesses that weren't in that licensed database?
When we've compared the business license data to Data Axel, at least, Data Actually USA, we're seeing pretty good matchup, pretty good compliance, as it seems. So, yeah, I think, I think we're pretty well on track now. Now, our, our business license administration and any discovery work we do there is led by a little bit different unit. I work with them closely and work with Ian Davis, the head of that group. And so we do talk and we do exchange information. But, you know, anytime either one of us sees something that looks amiss, we're sure to let each other know.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have two quick questions for you.
Sure.
Do you provide this same service that you provide to study Willow's to the county or to Orland?
We do provide to Glen County Incorporated. I'd honestly have to double-check Orland. I'm not positive on that one.
I just didn't know.
I'm pretty sure that they do. Yeah.
Tied in or not with how you help allocate where the money goes to or if you were able to? I'm just curious, because I know there's kind of some, some easy crossings there, I guess, especially if you're basing off of zip codes, because some of our county folks saw the same zip as Willow's.
Absolutely.
And then my other question on that was, is I noticed a couple of times I've been going out to eat one of the local places here, wasn't charging the same or the increased tax rate. So how does HDL come and handle that hurdle?
If, if you run into a situation like that, by all means, please refer it our way. We do, we do look at transactions tax ratios compared to Bradley Burns dollars to kind of gauge what should be the appropriate amount. And if we see an anomaly, we'll certainly, we'll certainly follow up on it. But that's, you know, if, for example, the Bradley Burns rate is 1% and we have a half-cent transactions tax, it's fairly easy now to, to figure out what the transactions tax should be as a dollar total. And we have lots of routines that isolate sort of exceptions to that.
Okay. So then as far as, you know, correcting that with those entities that maybe are not charging the correct tax rate, how do we go about, how does that go about being handled?
We, we would approach the state. It's a slightly different unit. We work, you know, with respect to local tax, with their local revenue division. Transactions tax is handled by return analysis, but we have good contacts in each agency, and we routinely file cases either via petition forms or spreadsheets, informing the state of where we think there are issues that we'd like them to take a look at.
Okay. So that's not something that you necessarily are responsible for tracking. It's just kind of ends up being like a side portion of while you're doing your regular duties?
Yes. Well, if, I'm just double-checking. If we, if we are providing transactions tax services for the city, then we would certainly do routine reviews. Now, I do not see that we are right now. We do provide admin services for your Bradley Burns local tax, but I don't see that we're tracking the transactions tax. It's a separate contract or at least an amendment to your current contract that would add that on. And if, if we have that, then we can go and we do quarter, you know, routine reviews just like we would for the Bradley Burns.
Okay. Okay. Perfect. That's all I had. Is there any other questions? Well, thank you very much for your time.
Yeah, thank you. Very much appreciate it.
Really appreciate the presentation.
Thank you, Matt.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on. Next item is Item 7, Public Comment and Consent Calendar Forum. All matters on the consent calendar are considered routine and are approved by one motion and vote unless council members or the city manager first requests that a matter be removed for separate discussion and action. Individuals wishing to address the city council concerning consent calendar items or regarding items that are not already on the agenda are invited to make oral comments of up to three minutes at this time. Please address your comments to the mayor and council members and not to staff or the audience. By state law, the council, the council is not permitted to undertake any action or discussion on any items not appearing on the posted agenda. All right. Is there any public comment on anything not on the agenda? Yes, Mr. Ross? Go ahead. Come on up.
Doug Ross, DOUGROSS, resident of the city of Willow's. I see a lot of electronic devices zooming around in all directions these days, ranging from e-skateboards to e-bicycles to other types of basically unlicensed crap. They go on sidewalks at high speeds. Felt the wind right next to my ear from someone going by at some future time. It would interest me to see if there was a licensing or regulation. This is a footnote. And pardon me for saying that. I saw, I got a photo of Councilmember Pride loading someone into an ambulance several months back. He'd come through the intersection of, I believe it was either Yolo Street or...
Oak and Yolo, I think.
Right, Oak and Willow.
Yolo. It's over on Yolo.
Oak and Yolo. In any case, it was East Willow's. But so he met the windshield of a car, basically, and his scooter broke in half. So I'd like to be, suggest a proactive approach to, it doesn't have to, you know, be harsh, but I noticed the past year, a rising tempo of people buzzing around.
Yeah.
Whatever the future of that might be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments on anything not posted on the agenda? Come on up.
I'm aware that it's not on the agenda today, but it's regarding marijuana dispensaries. And we've been working for over 18 months to try to get a business license and work with the city with the different zones and setbacks with requirements of where the dispensary could be and where the building could be. We received an email yesterday, basically just saying that despite all of our business experience and plan that we had, that we lacked the experience in medical or the marijuana dispensary field. And we just both feel that that is very discriminatory, that just because we haven't owned a dispensary before, that we're automatically counted out. Both Travis and I, as partners here, have over 25 years combined experience in business, retail, and wholesale, and have grown numerous businesses up from the ground that we've sold for numerous high profit and are currently operating two different businesses now as we speak. And I think that we should have had a lot more consideration with our experience and what we can bring to the city and what we offer, rather than just saying because we don't own a dispensary, we're counted out. We would like the council to take it into consideration, look over our application, and see what we have to offer, more than just the fact that we don't have experience in a dispensary. There's a 250-page regulation book that Travis and I have both read front to back and can recite any rules, laws, or regulations, including the track and trace system and the metric system. There's nothing about this business that we can't do and don't know, and we deserve the opportunity to try.
Thank you.
So I'm going to talk on the same subject. So our deadline was yesterday for any more information coming in. We got the letter stating that we were, we were denied about 4:35 and tried to call in beforehand to try to talk it over, see if we can get it in. Because part of it was, you know, we need to know about the, all the framework of the Department of Cannabis Control. Well, in the application, it says Bureau Cannabis Control, which isn't there, so that wasn't in there. But we do have the Department of Cannabis Control, so we do understand all that. And it also said, you know, we should, bottom line, you know, let's see, concerns, please consider partnering with experienced vendors and their consultants who have a proven track record in the cannabis industry. It's a real new business. Everyone knows that. And we have talked to numerous, numerous vendors, and I mean, and consulted and other owners. We just don't have another owner on our payroll or on the business with us. We weren't looking to get outside people. I mean, we're here to try and really set this off, and we want to, we want a little more of a chance at it. I mean, I know we have a meeting, Marty Brown tomorrow at 1:30, and the council or committee that's on there. Maybe they could be there and we can go over a few things. So we still got, should have had also had a 10-day extension on it if we didn't have the right information. We never received an email or confirmation of that. So that's where we like to be. I mean, I know you guys already tried it once with a big outfit coming in a few years ago, granted them a permit, and when the grass is green or somewhere else, they went somewhere else. We live here. We want to, want to make it happen. Because we've invested a lot of time and a lot of money in this. We would like a, like a fair shake at it. And I mean, if there's any other questions that you guys, they want to know or anyone needs to know, we can give that out as long as we have a chance to figure it out and maybe go over our actual expertise in business versus just kind of swept under the rug because we haven't done it before. I mean, it's no different than selling concrete. One unit we have to deal with, not 15. Should be a pretty simple thing compared to what we've done. We're just asking for maybe a little consideration, clarification on some stuff behind tomorrow on the meeting.
Well, thank you guys for coming.
Appreciate it.
Just out of curiosity, what's the name of the business?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right. So here we have Item 7A, Register. Sorry, is there any other public comment or anything not on the agenda? Okay. Okay, with that, we'll move on to Items 7A, Register Approval, 7B, Emergency Library Roof Failure Project, and Item 7C, Weed Abatement Contract. Is there anything that anybody has questions on or would like pulled?
Looks fairly straightforward to me.
Okay, with that, I'll be looking for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Okay, I have a first.
Second.
Okay, first and second. Is there any other questions? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passed, 5 to 0. Next up is Public Hearing, Item 8A. All matters in this section of the agenda are formal public hearings and will be acted on individually. Once the mayor opens a public meeting, members of the public may request to speak. When you are called on by the mayor, please state your name clearly for the audio recording. If you have any documentation that you would like to be distributed to the council, please give it to the city clerk for distribution. Okay, Item 8A, Weed Abatement Special Assessment Public Hearing. We will open up the public hearing at 6:50. Is there anyone here to speak in regards to? Is there anyone here to speak, bring regards to the weed abatement? Special assessment, public hearing. Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing at six fifty. I'm sorry, chief, was I supposed to give you a moment to speak on this? I realized that I vanduzled that entire process.
It's all good. The, the purpose of the hearing was just to give the property owners an opportunity to protest the city's decision and that what we had saw and approved at the prior council meeting. Was in fact a nuisance. Um, the only thing to note is that some of the things, there was a few properties that were removed off of the amended list that came back to you because uh, we either got the wrong parcel. Or um, it had been abated and I had a chance to go out there and look at it and make sure it was good, so. That's about it.
Also have any questions on this?
Well, so I guess my question, chief, would be the list in our packet, was that the sum total of all the parcels that received a notice? And then many of those have already self-abated and turned cards in?
Yes. Yep, and then a few of the properties, like the property owners came and they said, hey, we don't own that property anymore. So it was tracking down, trying to find a new address or um, hey, I think you meant to mark the neighbor and then going and looking at it. Yeah, we marked the wrong parcel, things like that. But then the next step basically from this is to confirm the, the attached resolution.
Okay, and with that, it looks like there is a resolution to be adopted with this. Can I get it? Is there a motion from the council?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, uh, yeah, thank you, chief, for your diligent work on, on the weed abatement matter as, as always. Good, good job. Now, Mr. Mayor, I move the resolution titled a resolution of the city council, the city willows confirming declarations of nuisances as amended. And confirming order for abatement to be adopted.
I have a first, is there a second?
Seconded.
I'll second.
Second, yeah, okay. Uh, any other further questions? Okay, uh, with that, I believe this will be a roll call vote, correct? Yeah, I believe so.
Council member Busby?
Aye.
Council member Pride?
Aye.
Council member Hanson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
And Mayor Hudson?
Yes.
Thank you. Next up is discussion and action calendar items. All matters in this section of the agenda are discussed and will be acted on individually. Individuals wishing to address the city council concerning any of these items are invited to make oral comments up to three minutes. As each agenda item is reviewed and discussed by council. Please address your comments to the mayor and council members, not to staff or the audience. When the mayor calls for public comment, please raise your hand to be acknowledged. While that required, the city requests that you state your name clearly for the audio recording. By state law, the council is not permitted to undertake any action or discussion. Items not appearing on the posted agenda. If you have any documentations, please distribute them to the city council. Sorry, to the city clerk. Let's see, item nine A, SB one transportation fund project list for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. And this will be a presentation given by Mr. Wagner.
Yes, mister.
Yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Um, this is a annual report that we have to bring to the council for their approval. Um, a little bit of history back in twenty seventeen, the state passed Senate Bill One, also known as SB one. And that particular bill provides additional revenues for road maintenance projects uh, within cities and counties as well as the state. And each year, uh, as part of that rules and regulations, the state requires each city or county that's going to be receiving those funds to actually um, identify which roads are slated to be treated in the next fiscal year. So this would be for fiscal year uh, twenty-five, twenty-six. And I will say that in the past, um, we do submit the list. I'm required to submit the list by July first of every year. Those lists can change throughout the year if need be. Um, so for some reason, if the council ever adopts this uh, in a particular year, uh, those can get changed over the course of a year, but the state really wants to know uh, that we have a dedicated project uh, that we want to spend the monies on. For next year in twenty-five, twenty-six, uh, the state's estimated that the city is going to receive a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four dollars in SB one monies. And last year, uh, it was partially based on um, issues that we've come up or heard about for the prior fiscal year as well as our pavement management program. Uh, but we've identified two streets that we would like to submit to the state this year. Um, and these have been discussed before at the, at the council level, but one of them is Oak, West Oak Street. From South Marshall Avenue to South Murdoch Avenue. And the second one is a reconstruction of Madrone Manor cul-de-sac. And both of those streets are in pretty poor condition. Um, they're gonna need uh, what's known as complete reconstruction. One of the reasons why Oak Street was selected uh, during discussions from last year was because we have a, a pretty robust grant, uh, Clean California Grant from Caltrans for the uh, pool renovation and Sycamore Park renovation. And Oak Street was a direct feeder that went into uh, that park, so uh, it was a council's opinion at that time that um, that should be one of the streets on the list. The other one is Madrone Manor. Um, that cul-de-sac is in very poor condition. There's actually dirt coming through in sections where the pavement's worn away. So both of those are recommended by staff to be on this year's list. It also requires, SB one also requires that monies must be specifically identified and incorporated into the city's adopted budget. And these projects must be submitted to the State Transportation Commission, uh, as I mentioned on July first. There's really no fiscal impact by approving the resolution that's associated with this. It's just simply providing a list to the state, um, and it is committing to spend SB one monies. The state does dictate to um, every agency uh, a model ordinance, which is pretty much what has been used in this particular case. And it has the required information that the state has asked for. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Council members, any questions?
No, it's pretty much what we've talked about prior tonight, so.
Just being one of the newer council members, I'd just be interested in maybe just seeing at some point the, maybe a full list of those streets that we know are needing major, I mean, repairs. Just when you're out in the community, people are like, well, when are we gonna do the intersection at the Elks Lodge? Or when are we gonna do Ash Street? Cause it's terrible. And it'd just be from a council perspective, interesting to see, you know, what's in the queue for when we have money.
Absolutely, and we do have, um, so in twenty twenty-one there was countywide uh, effort that uh, every city within the county as well as the county participated in development of a pavement management program. I have the report from that. Those are typically refreshed about every five years, so it's coming up where we need to refresh that, but uh, I have an entire uh, report that I'd be happy to share with you if, if you wish to see that. And, and honestly, uh, just from, from a staff perspective. We do look at that list. But it's a balance between looking at that list and also hearing constituents that the council brings forward and says, okay, it's we can't strictly go off of one list or strictly off of another one. It's kind of a combination and that's, that's exactly the approach that we try to take.
Thank you.
Madrone Manor was one of those brought forth because if you drive out and looked at it. Those garbage trucks, when they do the, the round, they've destroyed it.
Yep.
Well, but as a follow-up to that, cause I believe I was attending the council meetings and it's my remembrance was that waste management wasn't going to do anything differently. They said the, the folks who live in there can bring their garbage cans out to Edgewood. But if we repair it, are we just going to see the same problem happen over time if those garbage trucks are gonna continue to go in there and turn around?
Well, waste management does provide a, a certain fee, for lack of a better word. That does go towards, I believe, street project funds for the repairs of that there and the damages our trucks do do. I believe it's used a lot for
Well, we get, we get a franchise fee from them and I don't
That's the
Have it remembered off, I don't remember it off the top of my head, the amount, but you know, as they told me when I met with them, you're free to use that however you want to use it, so. Um, it's that or bringing out to the edge or the other option was to add an additional fee if we want a special fee that we want to have added to the bill. We could add that on and, and then earmark that if we wanted to. That was like the three options that were offered. I just, like I said, I just remembered that discussion and didn't know what the resolution.
I remember I came up in a waste management meeting when I first started with the city council, so. A little bit ago, but. Any further questions?
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Mayor, just a comment. No, I, I'm happy to see, very pleased to see this matter coming before us because as Vice Mayor Thomas stated, we, the previous council had extensive discussion on, on these two projects, West Oak and Madrone Manor. Yeah. As indicated in the staff report, the, the West Oak was one of the, among the lowest pavement condition index streets within the city. And of course, Madrone is a, is a, is a ditch bank now due to the waste management trucks, but uh, no, very pleased to see this come forward and it's, it's much needed and uh, it's a long list, but these are among the worst in the city, so. Thank you. Thank you, John, for your work on this. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thanks.
Council member Busby, anything to add? Are any of these getting new sidewalks?
Uh, yes, as a matter of fact, on West Oak Street, there is both substandard and missing sidewalk on the north side of West Oak Street.
Okay.
So this is going to be, um, it's, there's something called complete streets and we haven't gone through and adopted that, that particular resolution, but a complete streets resolution says when you repave streets, you look at everything from uh, pedestrian facilities, including pedestrian ramps, sidewalks, uh, bicycle facilities, transit, everything else. So we do take kind of that holistic approach when we look at a particular project. This one would be uh, installing sidewalk uh, to city standards on the north side of West Oak Street um, between Murdoch and Marshall. So yes, it is including as well as replacing some of the curb and gutter and a couple of curb ramps with the pedestrian ramps in that area.
And then SB one funds, how are those uh, how are those collected? Where's the, where's that money coming from?
The, the state actually allocates money and I don't know the nuances of, of how it shows up in our checking account or
I just didn't know where they actually, how they collected the money. Is that a gas tax?
It's, it is another version of gas tax, but it has strings that are different strings than gas tax money. You have to provide allocate what we call a maintenance of effort for percentage of your general fund to uh, match the funds that you get from the state. And you're gonna be actually hearing more about that real soon.
So those electric vehicles that we're being forced to buy and the county's buying don't pay into that fund?
Well, that's a, that's a challenge at the state level right now because since they don't buy gas, they don't pay the taxes for that and the, the state is, I know they're considering um, trying to link it somehow to vehicle registration fees and each um, vehicle owner would have to provide mileage driven in the past year and, and switching it to that as opposed to, to gas, especially for electric vehicles, but I haven't seen any specific actual legislation on that at this point.
Um, I don't have any further questions. Uh, any public comment regarding this item? SB one transportation funds. All right, with that, I'm looking for a motion from the council.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that the resolution of the city council of the city of Willows adopting a list of street improvement projects for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six and recommending the use of the SB one monies. The Road Repair and Accountability Act two thousand and seventeen to fund said projects as contained in our agenda package. Be approved.
I have a first, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. First and second. Is there any further questions? All right, with that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion pass.
Roll call vote or not?
Five, uh, don't believe so.
Resolution. Either way, voting yes.
Council, I would recommend vocal vote. And does say roll call vote on my cheat sheet over here that I didn't follow for the public hearing as well.
So this will be a roll call vote.
Council member Busby?
Aye.
Council member Pride?
Aye.
Council member Hanson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Hudson?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have item nine B, preliminary engineers report landscaping and lighting assessment district. See preliminary annual, uh, sorry, preliminary annual engineers report. As prepared by Coastland Civil Engineering. Uh, this will go again back to Mr. Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Um, this is an annual item that has to be brought to you. It's typically, excuse me, a three-step process and the council's actually already done the first step. On February twenty-fifth, you appointed the uh, assessment engineer being Coastland Civil Engineering. The thing I will say is lighting and landscaping assessment districts are actually the rules and regulations of that are dictated by the uh, state, um, the Streets and Highways Code. So there's a whole set of rules and regulations and part of those say when this type of assessment district is formed, you have to bring these reports every year. And the reports basically say what was spent in the prior year and what you anticipate spending in the future year as well as uh, the funds that are in the various accounts. And they are dedicated funds um, that have to be allocated specific, specifically to a lighting and landscaping assessment district, so. What the council has seen in the past, and I pointed this out, but these assessments fluctuate every year because some years, some of the zones do they, they do less work than was originally anticipated or they do more work than originally anticipated, so you are gonna see a fluctuation and, and I'll go through those um, tonight, but the, this is the second part of the three-step process and tonight is being presented the preliminary engineers report, which outlines everything that we have gleaned uh, that is going to be done in fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. It presents the report. The council has the ability to provide any comments, direct us to make any changes. And then the final step is going to be on June the twenty-fourth, I believe it's referenced in the resolution. That we bring this back for a public hearing. And at that point, we ask uh, the council to authorize letting the collection of assessments for the upcoming fiscal year. And the way those assessments are paid for, they're included on the tax rolls um, on any, on everybody's property taxes. So this year, um, there's a couple of things that I wanted to mention. Well, first of all, the assessment district is separate, separated into three zones. There's zone A that covers Birch Street Village. And in that zone, we cover both lighting and landscaping. It's, it's landscaping maintenance and some common areas. Zone B uh, covers lighting specifically associated with Walmart. So that's the lighting on Airport Boulevard as well as it covers part of the signal costs for operating the traffic signal at uh, at Airport and uh, Wood Street. And then zone C uh, covers the landscape and, and lighting on Harvest Drive down by Rumiano Cheese area. This year, uh, we're proposing that the, based on what we anticipate for expenditure, zone A assessments are gonna go up a hundred and twenty-nine dollars and change. Uh, zone B is actually going to uh, decrease about two hundred and thirty-three dollars a year. And zone C is going to increase about a hundred and fifty-four dollars a year. And the things that, uh, the one thing I wanted to point out in both zones A and C, uh, this year, there're gonna be some pretty major projects in those two zones. Um, in talking with uh, the Community Development Services Director. One of the things that we're doing is putting out an uh, request for uh, proposals to landscape contractors. And we're going to be refurbishing a lot of the landscaping as well as some of the irrigation system in both zones A and C. Um, so you will be seeing that project take place as soon as, um, as soon as we get approval for the final assessments, then we would put out the RFP and, and hopefully in the fall, uh, we'll see some some form of improvement. The other thing that we're looking at doing is in that um, RFP, we're gonna be asking contractors to also give us a price for what it would take for them to maintain the landscaping in those particular areas because as a contract, on a contract basis, it may be easier for us to track costs and, and it is a little bit of a, little bit of an effort for Public Works crews to include that and all the things that they do, so. Um, we're gonna be doing that. The other thing that I wanted to point out is, as part of this whole process, so there's the proposed assessments, but then there's actually maximum assessments. That basically set a bar that says, once we set those maximum assessments, the actual annual assessments can never go above those. that basically set a bar that says, once we set those maximum assessments, the actual annual assessments can never go above those unless we go back out for a vote. And I can tell you that the proposed assessments, for instance, Zone A has a proposed assessment for next year of two hundred and ninety three dollars. But the maximum assessment that we could ever charge is six hundred and thirteen. So we're well below the maximum in that zone. Uh, Zone B, um, our proposed assessment for next year is nine hundred and ninety two dollars. The maximum assessment for that particular zone is eight thousand seven hundred and sixteen. So we're well below that. Uh, and then in Zone C, uh, the maximum assessment we're proposing is seven thousand and six dollars per year and the maximum assessment in that is actually eighty three thousand dollars a year. So we're well, well under the maximum. But as part of this process, we we try to index every year those maximum assessments by the cost of living to make sure that we have the ability to stay up with the cost of living if we ever have to raise the assessments. I believe that is primarily the information I want to get across. The the engineers report obviously is attached to the staff report. Um, as I mentioned, the public hearing is on June twenty fourth, uh, which would be the next time we come back. So again, the council, if you have any changes um, that you'd like to see, any questions you'd like to ask, certainly tonight is your opportunity. Um, if you direct any changes, we would make those changes and bring the final back to you in June. Uh, the one thing I would like to point out on the resolution, one very, very minor change is in the very first paragraph where it says whereas on October eleventh, two thousand five, the city council adopted um, that resolution number. I just want to double check uh, with the city clerk. And you don't have to do that now, but I just want to check that that resolution number is right. I believe it is. But um, that was the only thing that I wanted to mention on the resolution. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Perfect. Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Vice Mayor Thomas? Councilmember Pride?
Nope.
Councilmember Busby? Councilmember Hanson?
Uh, just just a quick comment, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Uh, City Engineer John Wanger, thank you as always for your uh, very thorough, accurate and and comprehensive. You understand engineers report. Good work.
Thank you.
Uh, just to point out that none of us like tax increases, but the assessment for Zone A, Burt Street Village, a number of of our constituents one hundred and twenty nine dollars and eighty six cents, the increase. Just want to point out that that uh, since my time on the council, historically, the assessment has either remained the same or been decreased much more often than it's been increased. So this is kind of anomaly due to landscaping updates and and needed maintenance. So uh, I just wanted to to point that out. I mean, again, I I I feel for those individuals with that that uh, the fee increase for the year, but it it's necessary for the for the maintenance. With with that said, uh, uh, thank you, John, for your work. And that's all I had, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
I uh, disagree. I was happily willing to pay that Zone A fee when I was living in that area because that is one of the best lit areas in our town for kids to be able to go around that at night. So I've seen how the lights are there. My only question is, is how do we do that for the rest of the town? We have a very dark town. But if you walked around here at night or driven, um, dogs, cats, people pop out of nowhere on you, um, because it's dark along along a lot of our streets. So I'm curious as to how the three zones were set up and then how the rest of the town where we do have streetlights are actually calculated into this.
Sure. Um, the three zones, so so typically those zones are set up when developments come through. So for instance, excuse me, when the Burt Street Village came through, the this assessment district was actually started with the formation of the Burt Street Village.
Right, okay.
When Walmart came on, we added them in as a zone to this. And when the Basin Street properties brought in that Harvest Drive, we added those in as well. So as new developments occur, um, one of the things that, you know, most cities struggle with is paying for all the services and everything else. So the the landscape and lighting assessment district has been a mechanism since nineteen seventy two to allow uh, cities or counties to actually assess the property owners to help assist with pay for things like electricity for lights or lands common landscaping. The one thing I will say is um, if there is a specific area in town that a group of uh, residents said, gosh, we'd really like to up the the lighting in our particular area. They can certainly circulate a petition and bring it forward to staff. Um, staff would look at it, estimate the cost, be able to allow the people in that area know what the cost would be. Um, and if those costs are acceptable uh, to those folks, we could certainly look at including them as another zone within the lighting and landscaping assessment district. I will say that um, typically if there's an existing residential area that let's say they want to put in more streetlights. The assessment uh, typically will be higher for anywhere from five to ten years because they actually pay for all the costs associated with installing new lights. Um, so there's typically a higher assessment to actually pay off the construction, but once the construction is paid off, then the assessments um, basically come back down to where they're only paying for the electricity and the maintenance of those lights.
So then like, let's take a neighborhood, um, call it the Woodhood, you know, uh, is that area where those lights are? How are those? How are those paid for?
Those are currently paid out of the general fund uh, for the most part that um, all the all the lights that are not within these assessment districts within town are paid for uh, through a general fund. It was just through a PG&E bill that we receive uh, either monthly or annually.
Okay.
And it is, I I will tell you that PG&Es, it depend, it gets a little bit complicated, but different lights within the city are in different rate schedules. So they have a a different amount uh, per month that PG&E charges, but uh, for instance, they may charge seven dollars or eight dollars a month for the electricity for each light within the city. So they have a fixed charge that they it's an annual fixed charge, but um, they do charge per light.
Thank you. Um, is there any public comment regarding? Oh, sorry, these are long names. Uh, the landscape and lighting assessment districts. Any public comment? Okay, with that, we will go to um, this is another uh, yeah, so we need another roll call vote for another resolution?
Want to make a motion?
Oh, we need a motion. Sorry, we need a motion first.
So, Mayor, I will move that we adopt a resolution of intention to levy and collect annual assessments preliminarily approving the engineers report for FY twenty twenty five, twenty six for the city of Willow's landscaping and lighting assessment district and setting the time and date of the public hearing pursuant to the landscaping and lighting act of nineteen seventy two. Move to approve.
Is there a second?
There's a first and second. Any further discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Councilmember Busby?
Aye.
Councilmember Pride?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Hudson?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Well, thank you for coming and thank you for uh, your information. That was really well received and.
You know, one one thing I wanted to mention, Mr. Mayor, if you would, um, I have Lori Loza with us tonight. She's actually a supervising engineer with our company and we've appointed her Deputy City Engineer, and I just wanted her to be in front of the council to be able to see and interact with with them. So I I forgot to introduce Lori, but thank you.
Thanks, John, for doing that. Welcome.
Thank you, John.
Thank you for coming and making the trip.
Good to meet you, Lori. Drive safe.
And then next up, we have item nine C fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty five mid-year budget review. It's be presented by Financial Director Joanne Moore.
Well, the slideshow is getting up, though I would like to just briefly state that um, the mid-year budget this year is a little later than it usually would be. Usually we would try to have this done by February or March at the latest, but um, as you know, you can imagine, um, there's a lot going on in the finance department. We have not completed our transition of all of Tyler Technologies. Um, the finance and HR specialist is learning payroll. Um, so there's a lot of work for two people to do. And uh, Joanne is also learning from Andy Heath about uh, the financial forecasting model and how that works and some of the anomalies that are difference between different between cities and nonprofits, which is where most recently Joanne came from. So um, it's it's taken a little longer than planned or expected, but we're we're here tonight. We made it to the finish line with the mid-year budget and I think it'll give you um, a good perspective on what we've done uh, for the first six months of this fiscal year from July one to December and a sense of where we will finish out the remainder of the fiscal year as of June thirtieth. With that, Joanne?
So just a quick like discussion on our on this outline this evening. Um, it will just go over the mid-year budget review process, the general fund revenues and expenditures, general fund financial forecast overview. And then if you have any questions, um, again, this is only the general fund. We're not going over every single fund that we have. Um, since general fund is the one that's most impacted. So our mid-year budget process, more like seventy five percent year budget process, but here we are. Um, review and update the fiscal year twenty four, twenty five financial activity, uh, obviously preliminarily audited. Um, develop estimates for year end activity and fund balance carryover. Um, we meet with staff as required to obtain any updated baseline budget information, like how do we feel that it's going to go through the end of this fiscal year? Um, incorporate any new developments to the budget and review revenue trends and forecasts that will impact the budgeted funds. Again, I just wanted to let you know that this is for fiscal year twenty four, twenty five only. I know that Marty presented on April twenty second a um, a like a budget overview for what we are thinking for twenty five, twenty six. So kind of just put that behind you. Don't compare it because it's going to be like apples and oranges at this point. We are strictly this year only. So as you can see right here for fiscal year twenty 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 four, twenty five, our adopted budget, our revenues for five point eight million and expenditures we had for six point four million. Our estimated amounts at six thirty twenty five, again, very conservatively projected out to the end of the year. We have a seven point two million dollar revenue and six point eight expenditures. Um, this caused a uh, surplus in revenues of eight hundred and eighty three thousand and just an increase in expenditures of four hundred and fourteen thousand. So in our adopted budget for this year, when we did the adopted budget last year, we were supposed to hit six hundred and twenty thousand in our reserves. Because we have a three hundred and seventy five thousand approximate surplus through the end of the year, we will not have to tap into that.
That's a good thing, right?
Yes, that's what you want. You may want surplus, definitely. Um, so going over some changes, so this is just a real quick uh, overview of the revenue changes. So the again, the increase in the revenue was forecasted at eight hundred and eighty three thousand. I just picked the main um, ones that stuck out to me as I was going through all of the revenue lines. I I didn't want to give you every single revenue line. We would be here all night. Um, so property taxes, we had it in, there will be a a small increase, you know, based on two point five percent growth. Same with the property taxes in lieu. Um, encroachment permits are coming in a little bit higher as our planning fees. Um, the transient occupancy tax is a little bit higher as well. And um, I need to explain about the S L E S F funding. And if you do not know, it is the supplemental law enforcement services fund and we receive the monies from the county. However, with that said, we do not normally receive a hundred and eighty thousand extra dollars a year for these. We received past payments for fiscal year twenty two, twenty three, which was um, eighty six thousand. And fiscal year twenty three, twenty four, which was another ninety four thousand. So don't count on that money every year. So that just helped with our little surplus this year. We are receiving payments monthly now from the county. So it's it's more, you know, it's coming in timely now. Um, the other one is listed under fire grants, but a lot of this is the fire department going out uh, doing OES work with the strike teams and prepositioning. So um, Nate has brought in a lot of funds which helps a lot, but don't get too excited because wait until you get to expenditures. Um, the remainder of the revenue lines just kind of all netted out to an increase of seventeen thousand. Again, conservatively, um, just um, oh no, I lost my train of thought. Um, projecting to the end of the year. Uh, and another, I didn't list measure I on here and it is included in the original budget that was adopted last year. So there were no real big changes from what we projected last year as to what HDL is projecting this year for us to receive for the months of April. Bless you. April, May and June, which is about five hundred thousand dollars that we should receive for our five hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars, which is what we will receive for measure I. Okay, so now we can go over again this year. These are high. I'm I'm not going over every line item again because we wouldn't be here for a very long time. However, the overall, the general fund expenditures that we need to increase um, was four hundred and fourteen thousand, seven hundred, two. And I just picked out kind of the highlights of each department and listed it on there. Um, we for city council, for your department, we had that goal setting and the police department consultant. So ended up um, we need to just increase that by seventy five hundred. Uh, the city manager budget. A lot the since the city clerk, since Amos vacated, we had that vacant salary, but we moved it down to contractor. So just moving funds from one to another. Um, the League of California Cities technically does not come out of the city manager budget. That will be moved for next year, but for this year it did come out of there. So we had to account for that five thousand dollars. Um, the expenses for the measure I education that was approved by council for ten thousand dollars somehow was never placed on the budget. So that came out as a zero. So an expense of ten thousand dollars that was spent there. Um, and then just significant savings in employee costs due to vacancies. So that includes, you know, your health insurance, your uh, payroll taxes and such benefits. Planning Department just overall had a savings of about eighty five hundred dollars or will have a savings. Um, again, it was minor like health insurance. It it was just a combination combination of the different general ledger lines. Uh, moving on to our citywide budget, we just needed to increase that by seventy one thousand. Mainly due to the general liability insurance and work comp insurance costs are just outrageous and they will keep increasing every year. Um, I believe we just got our new uh, not proposal, but estimates for the next year and it just it just keeps increasing. So always it it's just how it is. Um, the Civic Center, um, an increase of almost thirty thousand dollars due to one higher utility cost PG&E is also outrageous. Um, and then we added the janitorial contract to cover that um, housekeeping services for this building so that we don't have to do that. Um, the building department had some savings. There was a reduction in building inspections and code enforcement. Again, we're just looking at this year. Don't take it like we're going to roll this into next year. Um, when we do next year's budget, but currently this year, we had that little bit of savings and a savings in employee health insurance as well. The library um, had a savings overall of about forty six thousand dollars. We have some salary and benefit savings due to vacant position. And then again, just going down the line of all the general ledger expenses, um, just some savings overall. Uh, the city attorney budget, we just had some savings or projected savings of six thousand dollars. Um, I think we just anticipated a little bit more in legal um, expenses, but it's coming in lower. Swimming pool, uh, we had to increase it just a little bit. Um, we have to put in the pool rental cost from Willow's Unified School District and then that netted with staff savings. Um, so just provide it like a small increase of fifteen hundred dollars. Parks and Public Works, we did need to. Parks and public works, we did need to increase $64,000. We do have some staffing costs. At the end of last year, I did have to pay out a, quite a bit of comp time, vacation time due to the MOU, and also, you know, a staff member that left, and that also leaves where you have to pay out comp time and vacation. So we just had some higher costs there. We did have some savings in employee health insurance. And then we had some unexpected repairs to the street sweeper, and again, the increased utility costs that will just go through every department that pays for...
Just quickly interject, just so that council knows. On repairs across the board, we as a city don't really put very much money into repairs, which is unusual. And I, even when Andy was first started here, he's like, wow, you guys are not accounting for any repairs? And I said, well, when we have big ones, we go to the council. And he said, oh, we, these are really small numbers in all your repairs. And I said, well, we don't have the kind of money to tie up in a budget line item here in the city. We have to use it, so we go to the council when there's big repairs during the course of the year. So that, you know, this is the kind of thing unless we start bolstering some of those repair maintenance line items in the budget. You know, these kinds of things, of course, you know, as long as there's deferred maintenance, we will continue to have, you know, big repair items that show up in the mid-year budget.
Did we not discuss that during the council's goals and priorities, though? Starting to bolster that number a little bit?
I think that was more apparatus for new equipment. I don't think we talked about repairs, line items repairs, yeah.
Okay, moving on to the fire department. Again, we had a big revenue, but we also have a big expense. So we do have to increase that department by 361,000. However, again, OES has covered a lot of that. We've also had some cost savings in employee health insurance, and again, with the increase of utility costs and the increased fuel costs. Now, some of the fuel costs were covered by OES as well. Not, not a lot, I don't think, but some of it was. Yeah, just some. I think more mainly for like the pre-positioning and everything. So that department had a 361,000 increase. And then I think Marty, you wanted to speak on this?
Yes, I did, thanks. So Andy and I, since both of us started here in the city of Willow's, Andy, he's our finance consultant for anybody here who doesn't know when I say Andy. We have never understood why there's a working capital reserve and a capital project reserve for a total of $205,000. It basically is just part of your reserve overall. And going back to the workshop, the council's priority workshop, I would, I'd like to recommend to the council that we just change that name and fold it into one called apparatus reserve, which is what the council seemed to be very interested in starting to build that up and not have this other name that every year is just a placeholder and we never use and nothing happens with it. And keep in mind that it still, it still adds to your bottom line of your total reserve, including both general fund and an apparatus reserve, which we discussed in more detail at that meeting. So that's, I, I would like to recommend that we do that if the council's amenable.
Makes perfect sense, yep.
Definitely.
Next slide. Okay, so here is our general fund forecast. Again, this year only, not looking at next year yet. We'll do that later.
So full years of the sales taxes not here?
Yes, it is.
It is, okay.
No, not the full year.
I think so.
Only this year, because we're just looking at this year. So that extra Measure I is only the, you know, like I said earlier, the 500,000 approximate, projected, excuse me. So here is our, you know, general fund forecast, which you, it's, it's nice to have it moving up, not down into a dooming spiral, so it does, you know. It looks better than it did last year, that's for sure. Next slide. Something else to look forward to is the UAL with the CalPERS. So next year, the 25, 26, it is projected to increase to almost 150,000. So we have to keep that in mind when we do next year's budget. This year is 81,000 approximately, so almost double.
And if, just to mention, if you recall, in a prior year, Andy pointed out that when the council completed its pension obligation bond back in early 2021, before I started with the city, it wiped out all the unfunded pension liability by bonding it at a lower interest rate, paying it all off, and now we have a bond payment. But what happens over time is you then start rebuilding an unfunded pension liability again. So we had three great years of no unfunded pension liability, and now we're on an upward trajectory to rebuild that in addition to the bond that we have at a lower interest rate, which is great. So we're going to have to anticipate that right now, it, last year it was 83,000. This year it's looking to be 81, did you say?
81,000 for the current year, fiscal year 24, 25, and next year 25, 26, projected to 149,000.
So as you can see, it's just snowballing, and it's another thing that we're just going to have to consider in our budgeting.
So 81,000 currently for this fiscal year and 149 for next fiscal year, is that what you said, Joanne?
Correct.
And this unfunded amount is strictly because of CalPERS financial advisors not being able to invest properly, correct? I mean, it's not...
It's a little more complicated than that, but I mean, that is, that is a common complaint that we all have, yes.
It's not the city's fault.
No.
This is at a state level.
This is the, this is sort of the legacy of all the employees that have ever been at the city of Willow's that are still alive at collecting their pensions, and we're paying for those. And when you have, as you might be aware, the classic CalPERS, which are prior to 2012, that is a much more robust retirement, and those were less sustainable, of which I'm no longer a member, unfortunately. So the Peppera post-2012 is more sustainable, and there is less of an unfunded pension liability, but there still is a little bit. So we're still paying off sort of the legacy classic CalPERS employee, especially when CalPERS does not do good on their investing, which that's what we're seeing here. They're investing an awful lot of money in climate change types of things. They've more, I think doubled their funding and investment. Yeah, well, and those things don't have great returns, so that's a problem.
Yeah, Evan, Evan, yeah, this is...
Just confirming with everyone that this is not a, a city of Willow's screw-up. This isn't, this isn't our doing, us doing bad, except unfortunately, living till we're older, right? I mean, that's essentially what...
Well, what, you know, the joke is, is that all the classic CalPERS employees have to die, sorry, because they get paid really well. And then the Peppera will place them, and like I said, there's much less unfunded pension liability with Peppera employees.
So Evan, as you alluded to, this falls at the feet of the CalPERS Board of Directors due to their malfeasance in investment policies, period. Instead of investing, where they should be investing the funds in lawfully, and lawful companies in the United States of America, they've decided to be politically correct with their investment, with their investments, which costs every municipality, every, every pers contributing agency in the state of California a lot of money. So I just had to say thank you for opening that door. It's insane. Thank you.
Sorry, continue.
And again, this slide, I, I want you to remember that this is this year, not going back to our April 22nd presentation, but it, our general fund balance you see starts to increase, thankfully, with Measure I and everything else. And in all honesty, just our general cost savings all around and being very frugal with everything that we do, sometimes too frugal, to where we are all questioning, do we buy that pen or do we, you know? So we've become very cost-conscious here as well, all of us as employees. So it does help everything, every little bit helps, and I feel like that's what we're constantly working towards. But it is better to see that upward trend than the downward trend, so... That's, that's it on that slide, and if you have any questions that I could answer?
Vice Mayor Thomas, I'll start with you.
I'm still struggling to understand it all.
I'm going to go to your counterpart, Councilmember Busby, as you guys are on the...
We are on the Finance Committee, and we will learn a little bit more about this. I just, the numbers, when I first received this, started adding things up, and it didn't seem to make sense. I've shuffled my papers so many times. So based on revenues, we're up 1.4 million in revenues. Our expenses are up 422,000, recommended adjustment's 414. Recommended adjustment for revenues is 883, so I'm not going to burden you, unless you have a quick, easy answer for that. And has probably having to do with reserves and the 375,000 surplus.
Yes.
But when I just looked at this one page, I didn't make sense.
I was finding the same thing. Which, can you say which slide that is?
Which page are you looking at?
Page four, the general fund revenues, adopted budget of 5,808, expenditures of 6,400, estimated revenue 7.2, which is up 1.4. Expenditures, 6,890, which is up 122. But those numbers don't match the recommended adjustment.
No, because when I go through the forecasting, that's what you're looking at. You're looking at the estimated amounts as of 630 of 25. So when I go through every line item and adjust everything for projecting out to the end of the year, that's where I get the adjustments, and I will do like, you know, a little formula on the side. But no, the straight math is not going to work. It's all sitting in.
Not the straight math kind of guy.
I know. When you go in the spreadsheet, it has, I have everything lined out there, and that's where it takes into consideration all of the forecasting that goes along with it, the projections to the end of the year.
Okay, one comment. The added janitorial contract, does that include the library? And Civic Center?
Yes.
It does.
And is that because it's contract, does it require prevailing wage?
I, I would have to check on that. I believe it does.
Yes, I believe it does.
Because when I saw it on the budget here, it's one, about a grand.
1,100, yeah.
And it just seemed high, so I'm glad this came up. So I know prevailing wage adds to everything.
Does.
So you'll be getting requests from the Finance Committee to see that contract, just so we can understand it. And I noticed that the strike team netted us about 1,003,000.
Kudos, Chief Mo.
I think that's their annual payment for...
And the last thing I'd like to say about unfunded pension liabilities, maybe we as a city, along with every other city that's suffering the same thing, start barking at, at the appropriate folks at the state level to fix their problem with a letter and try to build some grassroots, because this is ridiculous. If they're investing in stuff that only generates 3% return and when they shouldn't be investing in 7% return items. I don't know what those numbers are, but I know this number goes from 81,000 to 149. So I, I think somebody smarter than me could figure that, that. But it just seems like we, the cities and the counties, are probably just suffering without any ability to do anything about it.
And as mentioned, I mean, it looks like our, our bond was like perfectly timed because that was the point where the cash was cheapest in recent memory. So i-if, if we had not timed that exactly right, it'd be twice as bad.
We did the same thing in Marysville in 2019, a pension obligation bond and even a little lower interest rate. Yeah, it, now, like today, it would make sense to do that at this point because CalPERS interest is probably better than one we could get out in the bond market.
Bonds are what, six, six and a half?
Yeah, around there, yeah.
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Pride?
I had the same questions Councilmember Thomas had on that first page, so I'm still a hair confused, but not as. I don't have the other question.
Okay. Councilmember Busby, any questions?
Uh, nope. Rick took care of it. Again, kudos to the fire department for running, running a surplus there. Thank you for that extra work. Yeah, really interested to see once we can start putting actual numbers to projections and really feel this out for the next couple of years. So thank you for putting all this together.
Sorry, Councilmember Hanson?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
You're screaming coming from outside.
I did too.
It's kids playing.
No, it was good. Okay, good. I wasn't sure. Yeah, Joanne, Marty, thank you for the budget highlights. Very informative, good job on, on your, your document you put together here. And good presentation, and good, and thank you for the good news. You know, it's always, it's always a positive thing, right? When we go from a projected general fund deficit to a relatively small surplus. So that's excellent news, and it just, you know, goes right back on our lean mean operation here at the City of Willow's and right back on, on the City of Willow's team for watching, watching the, watching the dollars. But yeah, excellent news. And yeah, just, and Rick, I completely agree with, with writing a letter to, to that CalPERS board. I mean, that's where the, it's malfeasance is what it is. Their sole job is to, is to invest in, in American companies and really, in related firms who operate within the, within the law. And they're playing political games with our money, and it's not right. There's no reason, and, and that board has the municipalities to fall back on to make up their 7% shortfall. It's absolutely not right. They're not doing their job. The majority of that CalPERS board, and they haven't for, for decades. It's insane, so I, yeah, I'd like this...
I'd be curious to see what those board members are investing in personally.
It's probably not what they're investing with CalPERS.
I wouldn't be surprised if they were.
They probably have a financial professional that's doing their investments for it.
Anyway.
Well, they have a lot of high-level staff, and we get to hear some of them at the municipal finance institute that Joanne and I have gone to for the last couple of years. And, you know, I think when CalPERS people come and present to city people, you know, they should probably put on like an, you know, kind of a medal. They have a little bit of a medal vest on because there's pretty much daggers in everybody's eyes when they're talking, because, and they get challenged a lot by staff. I mean, I've been at city managers' meeting where people got up, different people, and then it just gets started, almost yelling at the CalPERS people for the way they're investing, very pointed, very direct. So there's lots of cities that are really upset about it because it's the taxpayers that pay the price when their investments go awry, which is what's been happening for quite some time. We were just looking at the...
Who appoints that board?
I'm sorry?
Who appoints that?
Well, so we were just, I just mentioned that to Andrew, and he looked it up. It's six elected members, three appointed by the governor, and I believe three ex-officios.
There you go. It's set up to fail.
Let's get back on track before we get...
That's all I had, Mr. Mayor. I just, I'll feel better semi-bill for the therapy, thank you.
I lost track of what I was going to say now. On this SLES, sorry, you have any further questions?
No, no, Evan, thank you.
On this SLESF funding, do we know how that's calculated or where that? I mean, is it just like a, hey, surprise, here's a check for you, like grandma at birthday? Or is it somehow calculated?
It's a state calculation. They decide it. They determine what it is per, per city.
Okay. I was just curious, because like you said, it was fluctuating, and it was higher this year than it has been in the past, so we said not to expect it to be higher, so I didn't know if it was like...
Those, that, that was a couple of years of catch-up payments, though. They paid us.
That one was.
So yeah, typically it's around 80,000, but because they were catching up because they missed some years, we got two checks, basically.
That was running about 15,000 a month, approximately.
With interest?
Oh, they did pay us interest, correct?
They did.
Yes.
Public agencies don't like to do that with each other, usually.
Second, uh, second question for you is...
They're charging us.
With our, with our surplus that we have, the whole idea of us selling city properties or things like that, is that slowly getting pushed to the outside? Is it looking as drastic, or?
Well, I'm still planning to come back to the council, actually, at the next meeting with, requesting budget authority to move forward with hiring an appraiser and a title company and moving forward with the approved policy of the majority of the council.
But that does soften that blow a little bit, correct, Mike?
Yes, it does. I think, though, that, that the... I think, though, that, that the real reality will be with the budget in June, because then you're gonna, then we will have included an entire year's projection of the sales tax, plus the new proposed items that I just, you know, presented to the council on April 22nd, which, those are not included in tonight's budget, so that there's gonna, you're gonna see more of a, I think, a truer, longer-term perspective on the city's finances next month.
And then, when you're talking about increase in general liability and workers' comp costs, I thought we were part of a pool. Are we not part of a, a pool when it comes to that? Like a, a league is, like group of cities? I don't think it's League of Cities, right?
Yeah, do you?
We are with the work comp. It increase, or our rebate that we would normally receive just reduced a little bit, so it's just a little bit extra. The majority of the increase is with the liability insurance. That was probably 98% of the, um, the increase in, in insurance.
And is that after they had their risk manager come out here and look at our buildings and everything else?
Appraisals? No, that was just the charge for last year, because we get those last June, I believe, when we receive our policy. So, now it's, it will, um, play in a part with the, um, appraisers.
Yeah, and just so you know, we are shopping around for, um, potentially new property and vehicle, um, insurance right now, because we, well, we had the appraisals. It's gonna increase, but I'd like to make it as painless as possible, right? So, we're looking to figure out where we can go and, um, you know, working with the broker on that, so.
And then, uh, for the higher utility costs for the Civic Center, and then you also said higher utility costs for the Fire Department. Will the new solar projects, will that lessen those as time goes on?
Yes.
Absolutely. So, we just got our permit issued for the, uh, solar at the fire station.
We're currently coordinating with them on construction schedules, so that one's moving along quickly and they should be able to knock that out relatively soon, so. Optimistic, optimistic news on that.
Perfect. And then, also on the Civic Center, you said higher utility costs, does that include the deductible we had to pay for? Collapse?
The collapse ceiling of the, I don't think so, does it?
No, 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 these are just strictly PG&E, that's it.
Okay.
Yeah, utility, meaning the, the actual utility costs.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then where is that deductible coming out of, or has it already come out?
We, we have submitted our insurance, um, initial preliminary and we did, we did get a check, right? We did, 39,000. And then, when this is all done, which we're getting very close, we'll pull all the information together and submit it and true up, um, how much we should be getting from the insurance. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, then, again, Fire Chief, thanks for, uh, what you do to try and, you know, help raise money for your department. You put a lot of, a lot of effort into getting the guys, the volunteers out there. Some paid positions every once in a while to help them and their families, and it's a good thing. Coming back around to the working capital reserve and the capital projects reserve. You said you'd like to roll those into, uh, a repair or replacement for apparatuses?
Well, apparatus, um, just call it an apparatus reserve, um, which is what I think the council, is one of the priorities, uh, for the council from the workshop a couple of weeks ago. And so, since I, since nobody knows what this reserve is for, or, um, and we've never touched it since I've been here, it seems like it would be more practical to change the name and dump the two piles of money together. And that will still continue to go towards the overall reserve. They'll just be, you know, lined out separately.
Okay. I think everyone on the council seemed pretty excited about that idea. And then, my last question for you, I know I had a lot. On the general fund forecast, I'm seeing, am I looking at this wrong? Am I seeing increased numbers since the last one received? Was it one council or two council meetings ago?
It was April 22nd, yeah. And, and the, the reason for that is because, excuse me, the forecast, as Joanne mentioned, sorry, does not have the full years of project, the one full year of projected sales tax of the projected, um, 1.5 sales tax is not included in the projection. And also, everything that was presented in, you know, sort of the wish list on the 22nd is also not included in this projection. So that's why I was saying you're, you're gonna see a difference in June. I think that'll be more reflective of kind of where we're headed. This is really just a snapshot of this fiscal year.
So, hold the phone on high hopes until you.
I would, I would recommend that, yes.
Perfect. All right, with that, is there any public comment regarding the budget presentation? Yeah, come on up. Please state your name for the audio recording.
Good evening, council, you know, seen but never heard. My name's Caitlin. I just wanted a clarifying question, so on slide eight, it talked about the library cost savings of vacant position. I was just curious which position that was.
Children's library, isn't it?
Library.
It's the children's library in position.
Okay, that was it, thank you.
Any other questions regarding the semi-annual budget review? Okay. With that, is this an action item, or is this just was a presentation received, right?
We're, we're asking you to approve the mid-year budget as presented.
There's no further conversation regarding this, I'll look for a motion from the council?
Mr. Mayor moved to approve item 9C as presented.
Yeah, I have a first, is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
And, uh, any further questions? Comment? Okay, with that, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Post same sign, motion passed five to zero. Okay, next up is 9D, council chambers use and fee policy. Receive, uh, let's see here, like I'm missing a couple pages out of my item here.
Uh, the first page is on the back of the lighting assessment. Front back.
Yeah, sorry, so council chambers use and fee policy will receive some information from, it looks like Marty on this one?
Yes, that's correct. So, um, as the council may recall, a couple of months ago, we came to the council and asked, we were having some discrepancies in the current policy and how it actually gets executed when people use the council chambers facility. And so, uh, we asked for the council's input on, on developing a policy or re-adopting the policy that we already have and exit, and actually executing it and implementing it, or coming up with a new policy. Uh, the council gave, um, a variety of feedback and then directed staff to come up with some options and come back to the council. So that's what we've done. So that's the presentation, uh, this evening. So, we came up with three options, um, and we are, um, recommending option number one, which is, um, use of council chambers, um, for free by nonprofits, government agencies, and civic groups, that, um, an up, up to four-hour duration, uh, for free. And, um, that the only use of any of our audiovisual equipment would be this monitor over here to my left. And, other than that, and a group would, this, this monitor here. Other than that, the, um, any group using council chambers would bring the rest of their audiovisual equipment, mics, um, laptops, anything like that. There'd be obviously no AV equipment fee, and there'd be no staffing fee. We'd ask for a security deposit of $50 that would be refundable. And if you're obviously, um, a regular user, maybe like the school district, you know, that would just sit there in an account and we probably wouldn't be giving it back to then take it back every month, kind of thing. Because we do have a number of regular users. And then, the user is, uh, of, of the room of council chambers is, is responsible for all the setup, cleanup, and placing furnishings, furnishings back as originally provided. Um, which is, sometimes that happens and sometimes it doesn't. Option two would be free use up to four hours, nonprofit, government agency, civic groups. And then, the main change here really is there'd be an audiovisual equipment fee of $50 and a staffing fee for city staff to manage the AV equipment. So, um, we wouldn't be letting non-city employees using, you know, city equipment. Again, a $50 security deposit and, uh, the same room setup expectations as mentioned previously. Option three would be between free and $100, up to a four-hour duration. Again, nonprofits, government agencies, and civic groups, free, public use. It's not, doesn't fall into one of those categories, would be $100. And everything else is basically the same as option two after that. And like I mentioned previously, the staff recommendation is option one. And the reason for that is it's cleaner, it's easier for us to manage, um, there's less moving parts, and it doesn't rely on a staff person maybe staying into the evening, um, to manage some, manage our equipment while somebody else's uses it. As you know, we, the, the key staff that would be doing that already attend night meetings and you're looking at most of them. So, there's already three night meetings, at least with two council meetings and a planning commission where, um, management staff are here and can manage this equipment. So, it would be adding more to their time, and while the city's charging for it, the only people who are, are able to manage this equipment are management staff, so they wouldn't be paid for that. So, overall, um, we think that the option one is just the easiest to manage. It's the simplest, uh, we're not, there's not a lot of exchange of money. It's a free use of the space. We're not trying to, you know, charge money, because the current policy says $20, but we never charge it. So, that's, that's our recommendation. I just want to point out, too, that we are in the middle of getting a estimate for, um, upgrading the, what's that board called, motherboard, I guess? Soundboard, over there, uh, the soundboard. And so that some of the crackling that we hear during the meeting, there'll be less of that. We're also looking at, um, upgrading the entire system and getting an estimate to explore the option the mayor had, which was taking our old equipment and putting it on a cart and allowing people to use that versus upgrading our equipment. I, I think it's gonna be fairly costly, but we're getting estimates for all of those things. I definitely think the soundboard, we should explore for sure upgrading that. And then also, I think included in that is how to close off, an estimate for closing this off if we're gonna go with an option that actually, you know, either way, I think we'd want to look at closing this off and preventing members of the public being able to use our equipment. So, the estimate will also include that as well. So that's still forthcoming, we don't have it yet, but hopefully very soon. And that concludes my presentation, unless you have questions for us.
Perfect, council, have any questions?
For your after-hours, they're just to, the building, front door's locked and they, when they're done, they leave, turn out the lights and go home, right?
Yes, that's a.
There's not a staff member here.
No, that's an interesting question and point. I was concerned about that when I first got here. There are a number of groups that use this facility at night without, um, city super, staff supervision from the city. And, um, there's a few different scenarios, I believe, for different people. We try to get people to lock this door from the inside, go out that door through the kitchen, out to the hall, and, um, lock the front door, and then they put the key through the counter and then they exit. That's typically, I believe, in most cases, how it works. Not, not.
Yeah.
Sorry, that's, sounds like a terrible process for.
Well, it's, it's not, it's what I inherited and it's what people expect, that they're, like the school district, that's the scenario of, I mean, I'm pretty sure, isn't that pretty much? That's, that's how it works, they have the key to the front door, they lock it, before the last person goes out, they put the key through our little grate at the counter and Tara picks it up in the morning and then they leave the building. Yeah, no, I, I'm honestly, I've never been excited about the fact that, that this chamber gets used by the public. I know it's a great resource, but it is, I just, you know, it's a concerning liability, frankly.
Well, the concern would be securing the audiovisual equipment and having it not walk out the door. And if they, you've, you mentioned before, there's diff, sometimes they don't put things back like they're supposed to.
Yes, we've had that issue before.
I, I think the policy should say that it's free of charge, $50 deposit, but if you don't put it back, we keep the 50.
And then the next time you come, we need to get another 50?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And maybe at that point in time, we might want, but when it starts to hit their pocketbook, they'll, they'll spend the extra five minutes to put it back.
I agree.
But we have to be able to secure the audiovisual.
That is one of the estimates that we're getting right now.
Councilmember Pride?
Have we, to our knowledge, ever had any problem with doors being left unlocked?
Yes, we have.
I would say that would be my greater concern, um, going forward. I mean, if the door's unlocked and we have more and more people kind of wandering around, go try the door and, and them getting in.
It's really difficult when you come into a new city that's been doing things a certain way and to say, what are we doing? We're not gonna do that and have everybody, you know, call the city council and say, what do you mean? You're, what, we've done this for 20 years. And so I, you know, can, you can only take on so much.
No.
Councilmember Pride?
And there's really no way to mitigate that without staff somehow being involved. To either.
Correct.
Get everybody in, make sure the doors are locked, so all they have to do is go out and make sure, you know, pull on it.
That's, that's absolutely true. I think what I, what we did is we went back and listened to the recording from the meeting two months ago where we got your feedback. And what we thought we heard was a willingness to do some of the things that maybe, like the AV equipment and kind of not allowing for that use, that there felt like there was some consensus on the council that that was maybe a good idea. But we also sensed that there was some concern that this is a community asset and it should be available to the public. And so, that's, I mean, that's kind of how we developed this, was based on your input, what we thought we heard, where the tea leaves were heavier on one side than the other side, and this is what we, and then our concerns, trying to address some of our own concerns. It's not perfect, I, I don't disagree.
The concerns with the audiovisuals, because they would monkey with the system and then it would be problematic when we had our council meetings or planning commission meetings. We had failure of our system, so we didn't get recorded or we, we couldn't broadcast like we, we promised. So, I agree that we should not let them use the AV.
Councilmember Busby?
Remind me, just out of curiosity, how often do we get, like, general public inquiries for room rental?
Not really ever that I can think of, it's mostly regular meetings. I think that, um, Councilmember Hanson could probably attest better than anybody, because he attends some of those meetings. Water board, the school district uses it, it's a lot of regular continuous use. But then also, when lamb derby's in full action, getting ready for lamb derby, they use the council chambers sometimes. But, you know, also Tara, our community development technician, sits on that board, so she has a key. So it's easy for her to open everything up and close it up, because she's an employee. There's a few other civic groups that have, a few times that I know of, used it, but it isn't, I can't think of a single time since I've been here where it's just the general public renting the council chambers or asking to, to use it for free. It's mostly all these other groups.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yeah, I could, uh, I could add a little bit to that. As Marty indicated, yeah, I, our previous discussion, we, we've got a great council chambers here and, uh, is a, it is a public building. And, uh, I, I do like option number one during the daytime. I, I am also, being in the protection life and property business for so long, security is, is an issue. Evening, evening meetings are an issue with security. And like, uh, Rick advised, I, I have a problem with, with fingers touching our AV equipment. We have a low-budget AV equipment, but that's, that was huge for us. You know, it cost a little bit of money, it was a, it was a huge step for us. People shouldn't touch other people's equipment without permission. And, uh, so, that, that'll be addressed, but, uh, our Glen County Fish Game Recreation Commission meetings are, are held here in the evenings. We've, we've been bi-monthly for years and now we're going to quarterly meetings, same as Buick County does. But I have a key, like Marty indicated, Tara is on the Lamb Derby committee, our, our very own Tara, our, who we, who we love dearly and she's a, she's an asset, asset here and, and she's very responsible and responsive, so. So our recording secretary goes through the process, reserves, reserves a room if we don't get bumped. Like I mentioned earlier, we've been bumped a number of times when we have a reservation. And, uh, and then, uh, Teresa, our recording secretary, will return a key, but I have a key. I do a building check, I do an area check, check the restrooms, make sure, no, check the staff, staff rooms of the unlocked portions of the building, make sure nobody's in here, and secure the front doors. That's, I am concerned about after-hours use of this building, definitely. I have found the doors open, open before. I found the back doors open twice. I did a building search and, uh, it takes a while, takes a while. I did a building search and it takes a while, takes a while. There's a lot of nicks and crannies around here. The library has a lot of them.
Mm-hmm.
The, the entire building with the exception of, of, uh, the staff offices were unsecured, unsecured, completely unsecured. And, uh, anyway, that's, that's not right. So, uh, so it does happen and luckily, luckily we, we haven't been at a loss or damage yet, yet. But it, it's concerning. I don't have a problem, like I say, once again, daytime meetings is not a problem. I, I am concerned about nighttime meetings. I do appreciate the fact that we can utilize this meeting and as long as, or this building for evening meetings. And I, I don't have a problem with it as long as people are response, responsible, responsive. Don't mess with the equipment and follow proper security procedures, but-
What, can I ask a question? I'm, I'm not sure. What is the part about the nighttime meetings that you have an issue with?
Security.
Oh, security. Oh, yes.
Like what I just said.
I thought you meant one of the things on this list.
Well, these other groups that use a meeting, do they, do they do a, a, a building check? I doubt it.
Not a building check, but I did have an incident, um, after a school board meeting. And it actually turned out to be our cleaning staff that had, was here the same night-
Right.
As the school board. And I think it was, they were the ones who, um, left inside here, not the outside doors, but they left the inside. And I spoke with the superintendent and he made it really clear that they have a whole routine when their meeting ends that he and another staff particip, I mean, person participate in, which is locking that door, going out that door. I mean, he seems to really, they know the drill, I think. So, um, unlocking the front door. And as far as I know, we've never had any issues with the school district. Like, like I said, the one time I thought there was an issue, it turned out to be our own new, they were relatively new cleaning staff. And we corrected that.
Two commission meetings ago, I ran into those folks and, uh, and I found out who they were. They were hanging out down the hallway.
Yep. Taking their break probably.
Yeah. So that, you know, it's, it's a, it's kind of, it's kind of a thorny subject. But it is a concern of mine for evening meetings, like I said, for security.
I mean, if, if the council wanted to, we, we could put restrictions on who gets to use it for evening meetings. I mean, maybe it's only reoccurring public agencies or something.
I think that'd be wise.
So real quick, I have a couple, sorry, I'll get to you, Lori, give me one second. Yeah, I saw you. Um, with that, I know we're talking about replacing the doors and possibly getting keyless entry into the building. Uh, when's that process looking to begin or start or is it still a possibility?
We've got a little bit of a funding challenge and we think we found a solution and we're going to be bringing it back to you. We're going from-
Regardless, you're going to have three types of systems. It's going to be a keyless entry system, a manual key entry, or a, a digital, uh, pin pad. Uh, no matter what you do, you're going to have to give somebody an access card, a key, or give them the code to the lock. So there's, there's no way around it to completely secure it. We don't have a security system in the council chambers to monitor stuff. So Marty brought up the point of the cleaning crew versus the school district. Stuff went missing, we'd have no way to tell who was doing that, this kind of thing. So the security concerns are just what they are with the limited technology that we have here. And it's, that is a, obviously a concern that you guys recognize, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think that either it, it spend a lot of money on more security with cameras and locks and those kinds of things. Um, and then continue to allow people to use it or shut down the use. Uh, you know, that's the only, that like, if you want a hundred percent assurance, I don't, those are like the only two really options.
No, I'm not thinking a hundred percent assurance because I don't think you can assure me a hundred percent anything when you have a glass entryway. I mean-
And we don't have an alarm or-
Say that out loud. I mean, it's just a glass entryway. Um, but my thought process is, is with those doors the way they are now, bells get stuck. Somebody undoes the lock, takes their key out, gets to re-twist it back the other way. You know, those doors, I can see the outside doors easily being left open where if there's keyless entry. I know there's ways to program it, say, hey, it's after this hour, they're completely shut down. And some of those systems there are, or like, you know, with the keypads, my home keypad, I can set up a temporary one that-
Yeah.
You know, it's only available for this section of time and then we're done with it.
I think we get-
Those would be options right now.
Yeah.
After our meetings.
I think we just get into the, you know, when he's talked keyless entry, absolutely. You can set, doors don't open until eight and you've got a key card into it. But then we're managing a system of who has key cards and, um, making sure we get that back. So, I mean, it's, it's achievable, but, um, just like keys getting out, I mean, we could give people keys. It'd be the same as a key card. We just need to track it and, I mean, I get the key card can deactivate and do different things for it. But, um, that's a whole system. We used to have it at the county at Bay Alarm and it's an expensive system. We don't have anything like that at all at this. We have, you know, PIN numbers that we put in. Uh, so a keyless card entry, um, would be a whole different setup for, for access and probably a subscription that heavily outweighs in cost what we provide in value with our limited staff that needs access to the building.
Okay. And that's why I wanted to, I just figured I'd ask the question.
Yeah.
Because I knew we were talking about redoing those. Um, no, I'd say that I'm definitely in favor of option one, um, if that's the case. Um, not offering it, you know, after hours. Um, I do like that the school board wants to come here and use a city facility. Um, however, when you're talking about the school boards and school districts, they do have the Office of Education buildings here in town as a, as a backup to that. Um, you know, but like I said, it is, it is nice to have our city buildings being used for that. Lori, you said something else to add?
Well, my thought was when you look at the groups that use this, such as the school board, the fishing game commission, um, any water boards. I'm thinking entities and particularly public agencies that need a setup like this because they're holding a public meeting. They're going to have the public here. They most likely want to bring microphones. They may have an obligation to record, again, thinking particularly of the school board. So for those entities, um, it makes sense to me. They're a little more higher level where the accountability for the process, as you described, the school board uses. They have a, a process to go through. It would limit the evening meeting use. I know when the Lamb Derby committee meets here, they just sit around a table.
Well, and, and you have a staff person that sits on that board.
Well, but even if you did it, so a lot of people that are using this space, they're just looking for the space that's available in the community. They don't need this kind of a setup. So I wonder, you know, if part of it is if we're not able to provide that anymore in the community because of the reasons we've just discussed, at least for evening meetings, that we look at what are some of the other options in town, just as part of our own brainstorming? Um, you know, there's the back room at Round Table, there's the new Twisted Twigs Event Center that's being set up. You know, maybe if it was available, it could be used. I'm just, I'm just thinking there's, there's a layering of the types of uses that this building lends itself to that you wouldn't find anywhere else for the school board. I mean, they could meet at the office of ed, but they'd be meeting at tables and, you know, it just wouldn't be quite the same.
Well, and-
Cameras in those rooms too, I believe.
Yeah. Um, just, you know, I did speak with the superintendent about this potential change. Cause when I was on the agenda last time, it definitely was noticed. And so we had a meeting to discuss it. And, um, the superintendent said, absolutely, it's all about the dais for them. He's like, we can bring our own equipment, no problem. We can take care of that if that's not going to be available other than a monitor that we totally got that. Um, it was really all about being able to access this and set their scout, their, their calendar for the year, which, um, I did share with councilmember Hanson because he's on another committee that meets at night, make sure there's no conflict. They like to do a year's worth because they are a public agency and a board just governing like us. And they want the dais. And that was the two main, most important things for them and everything else they would figure out themselves.
Yep, that's what I'm, mm-hmm.
And I, I mean, I think, I was trying to figure out, did I say no, no night meetings? Cause I don't remember saying that, but-
Oh, you didn't.
Yeah, you, you, okay. So you were going there because of the security issue?
Yeah.
Okay.
And well, it, it came because you're talking about the process that they use to lock the door, walk through the hallway, toss the key through the grates.
Mm-hmm.
You know, then walk out the door, make sure the door's shut.
And then sing yodela lai he ho.
Well, and if they didn't-
Yeah, right.
Well, here's the problem is if they didn't twist the lock and they threw the key already, they can't lock that door without contacting somebody. So that's why-
You are correct.
That's why I'm interested when we're going to get the new lock.
There's plenty of opportunity for failure. You're absolutely correct.
And so I think definitely limiting that, I think as a base contract, option one, this is my thought, is option one is a great base contract and then have it be amended based on a per group, per circumstance, you know, situation. Case by case basis, I guess is the best way to put it.
Amending the night part?
Um, yes, amending that.
Okay.
I think the night part-
So I, I would, I think it would be, it would be easier for us to manage. Cause then it gets into the, the city manager or the city clerk having the discretion to decide who gets it and who doesn't. And we never like that as staff, just so you know, we like things we clear, hang our hat on. So I think it would be more helpful if we literally identified the groups that can use it at night. And then it's just kind of done. And if every, anything comes up where there's another group sometime in the future who wants to do that, we can look at amending the policy. But I think we pretty clearly know who are the night groups. And I think they're all pretty much some sort of governing board or public agency.
Yeah. Yeah, I believe you're, you, you're, you are correct, Marty.
And if you don't mind doing that, I'd like to do that.
Any group, you want to do any group that's a public agency? Or what do you?
No, I, but what she just said in emotion.
Yeah.
I was going to say, like, I will figure out who-
With what she just said in emotion.
I will fi, yeah, well, and we, we can bring back a formal, all of it. I'm, I'm actually asking you to approve an, an option and concept, but I think we still have to come back with the written, everything dialed in. And at that time, I would list literally, these are the organizations that are allowed to use it at night.
An amended option one.
Correct.
And, and maybe when we say at night, say outside the operating hours of the city of Willows.
Yeah.
That would be weekend, that would be anytime after five o'clock.
Perfect.
Would be night.
And it could be a Saturday.
Right.
Exactly.
Sounds like directions given.
Okay, got it.
Is that all you need?
Solidify and make it happen.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we will go to item 10A, council correspondence. I did not receive any. Um, and so we will go on to item 10B, uh, city council comments and reports. We will start with councilmember Pride.
All right. So I attended the, um, waste management meeting this week for councilmember Busby because he had a conflict. They had changed the date of that meeting. So a couple of things that came out of that, they were letting everyone there know that the Willows, um, Community Cleanup Day is Saturday, June 7th from eight to 12 at the wastewater treatment plant. And I know we are putting that out in our stuff. Um, they're actually seeing a reduction in overall waste at the transfer station. It was down about a thousand tons, um, compared to the same time last year with no increase in illegal dumping, which is kind of cool. I'm reminding everybody mattresses are free to take to the dump, so please don't leave them by the roadside. They are free, they recycle them. Um, so on franchise fees, um, a couple of the county board of supervisors members did sort of hint, hint that it would be nice if, um, some of the city's franchise fees went back to all the costs of running the solid waste. Cause a hundred percent of the county's franchise fees go to that effort. So there was a hint, hint there. Um, Talia Richardson, the current director, she did say that the parcel fees for solid waste are likely going to need to be increased. So they're looking at a possible 218 process to assess, um, what those fee increases may need to look like. Um, cost of tire recycling, the increase has been significant. So they're coming up with a new process for when you can get rid of tires where you can go directly to Tasto instead of having to go through the transfer station. They're going to do more information on that. So it was actually a pretty interesting meeting. And again, as we're seeing across the board, so many fees are needing to go up just because the costs of doing business seem to be going up. So it was a very informative meeting. Um, I do want to say, I'm really happy to see, I, I read the sheriff's log in the Valley Mirror all the time. I'm happy to see that our Glen County Sheriff's Office is doing more traffic enforcement. If you read through those, I actually witnessed a traffic stop today as I went to the dentist. So it was like, I'm very excited if you're watching out there, Glen County Sheriff's Office. It's nice to see it. I hear all the time from people that are so concerned about how people drive in this town. So thank you for that. Um, on a code enforcement and Chief Monk laughed. I know there was some, um, Facebook comments in regard to 143 North Yolo that was completely remediated. There's a lot of very positive comments about that. And I know there's a gentleman who lives at 636 South Shasta and he wouldn't mind me saying that, but he's got an issue next door to him. Um, Mr. Kelly, so there's a, a container there and the weeds and it's been a bad situation. I think he's talked to the city, but literally on Facebook, he said, please, 636 South Shasta.
Yep, that's a, that's an ongoing issue we've been working on. Um, I won't get into too much of it, but the county's now working, um, with the property owner to, to try to abate the weeds. I did talk to him and his main concern at that time, the container's been an ongoing issue and getting compliance has, has not worked voluntarily. Uh, but the last response I got back from the county, which was last week, is that they are getting bids for a contractor to go cut the weeds down. And I'm sure they were in the weed abatement violation. Uh, but they're also looking to have some, um, the rights over the property if granted to them, the county themselves. And then we'd be able to move on getting the storage container off and the, the shed properly demolished. Uh, but as it is right now, the applicant, um, they're kind of going through those illegal proceedings.
Thank you. I just, he's, he's mentioned it a few times, so.
Yeah.
And then, um, lastly, I just want to say again, thank you to staff. We have a training session planned for May 20th for our planning commission. Um, more training for our planning commission has been something I've asked for, for a very long time. So I just want to say thank you very much and looking forward to seeing that training happening. That's all.
Perfect. Councilmember Busby?
Uh, yeah, uh, so, uh, as Lori mentioned, uh, had a conflict, which was the library board. Um, library board on May 8th, uh, they talked a little bit about the roof update, working with Joe on, um, uh, figuring out what the next steps are. They did get that room emptied and items moved to storage. Uh, however, uh, just so you guys know, it sounds like the HVAC is in up, uh, and going into the hot months, that's going to suck. So if we could get that looked at?
Yeah, so we, I did speak with, uh, Caitlin about this and looked at some options. Um, basically what we, what we can do while the, while the roof's being repaired and the HVAC, it's getting figured out in these upcoming weeks, is look at some portable units. Um, I know they make ones that you can, you could put inside and basically you just need to exhaust them out of the room. Um, and also looking into ones that maybe you don't have to exhaust. I don't know if those exist, but trying to get some, some rental, um, ones for that piece of it. And that's affecting, I believe, the, the children's library area in the back. Um, and is the one unit that is leaning on top of the roof where the collapse happened. Um, but yeah, we're going to look into some temporary solutions for them to keep that a little cooler in the back.
Right on. Thank you. Um, they've received about nine to 10 applications for the part-time children's librarian. They're parsing through all that. And then, uh, the library board's working on, uh, coming up with a, a list of various, uh, replacement items to be funded through the library trusts. Um, things like, uh, computers, chairs and a new rug for the children's area. I did mention that, hey, maybe they should talk to you guys about the computers. If, uh, if we're, we're having to do it, it's going to be a budgeted item for next fiscal year. If there's some economies in scale and buying all at once instead of two separate buys kind of thing. So, and that's after the library.
Can I ask you a quick question? Uh, did they, does figure out the hours? Did, was there anything figured out with the hours for the position for the children's librarian? Did they turn that to like almost a summertime position or, you know, they?
Hmm, no, I think they were going to look to just make it like 19 hours a week straightforward. I don't think by the time they would, are you talking about like using more hours before the end of the fiscal year?
I was thinking just using the hours during the summertime more specifically.
Oh, like more hours and less hours, yeah.
More hours during summertime and less elsewhere.
I, I think that, um, we kind of thought that would be difficult to manage and that would somebody want to, you know, for three months do 32 hours a week and then suddenly we have to cut them back to eight or something. We just thought it would be harder to hire with something that could fluctuate that much. Um, so, um, she was, uh, the library director was going to just go with the straight standard, like 19 hours a week.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Hanson?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, uh, just a couple of items. We, yesterday we had a Glen Groundwater Authority, uh, Board of Directors meeting, our monthly meeting. I'll, I'll just call it routine business because it's always extensive, but, uh, uh, basically focused on our, on, uh, our groundwater sustainability implementation activities and demand man, including demand management and our well mitigation, uh, programs. Uh, and the work continues. Uh, we have a solid board, we have a very good board and, uh, you know, we just, we have a lot to do, so. Getting our groundwater sustainability plan approved by the Department of Water Resources was, was huge, but that's just the beginning. So that work continues and it will be continued as we also work with our sister agency, the Closer Groundwater Authority. Uh, with that, uh, Lori mentioned, uh, uh, increased enforcement stops with Glen County Sheriff's Office. I noticed the same thing over the last couple of months, very pleased about that. Seen a lot of enforcement stops, a lot of enforcement contacts, so that's very good. That's outstanding. That's the way it's supposed to be. So good work to Glen County Sheriff's Office. And, uh, Lamb Derby, I'd like to thank, uh, our very own Tara Rusten-Hoven, who's, uh, an integral part of Lamb Derby Committee and her colleagues. Uh, for, uh, you know, all their work they do, uh, pretty much year round in the Lamb Derby Committee. But, uh, I had my, uh, 34 Dodge that, uh, my great granddad bought new and was my dad's baby. And after my dad passed, now it's, uh, you know, I have it. And, uh, anyway, it's rustic, but it made the 11 mile voyage into- the 11 mile voyage into Willows once again from the shop and got through the parade just fine. And, and Vice Mayor Thomas, uh, thank you Rick for writing and honorary council member Brenda for also writing with us. So, so we flew the, flew the colors, had, had fun and made it through. And, uh, yeah, it was, it was great. It was great. A lot of people, a lot of people, a lot of participation, a lot of attendees watching the parade this year. I didn't get to see in the parade as usual, as usual. Was it a good parade?
It was good.
Cool. Good. Good. But, uh, yeah, anyway. So it was, uh, my pleasure to, you know, uh, be part of flying the, flying the colors for the city council. So, and, uh, that's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Perfect. Thank you. Vice Mayor Thomas?
Well, I did ride with Gary in his 34 Dodge. And if I do it again, I think I might wear a neck brace because it's a, a little jerky.
It is.
And.
Rustic. You gotta want it.
As he calls it, barn rot, but it, it does have a definite odor about the.
Yes, it does.
About the vehicle.
Of course, a pancake slop on Rick's shirt didn't help either, but that's okay.
Yeah, I did have a bit of pancake.
Well, it mitigated the other smells. So there you go.
So we were flipping pancakes for the Rotary Club, uh, at seven o'clock in the morning. Um, so that was a good time. Uh, for the Lamb Derby Committee, thank you. Um, and all those who came out. Um, it was impressive to see the number of people on the streets. So for a little town, this town liked parades. This town comes out for the parades and, uh, it's, it's pretty impressive to see that. And I think what we ought to do is get maybe Mr. Danley to do a flyover with his, his drone next year, just to highlight how the city participates because, um, it was impressive. So, uh, I enjoyed the activities. We flipped a few pancakes and sausage and poured a little bit of, uh, frosty cold beverage down at the park. So it was a good day for the Rotary Club. And the only other thing I have is yesterday I attended the Laughco meeting and the only real highlight of that was we approved its annual budget and that number has already been provided to the city what our annual contribution is. It's 7,008 something, I think, if memory serves me right. And, uh, that's it.
Perfect. Thank you. So I did attend the Lamb Derby this year. I did miss the parade, but, uh, didn't make it down to the park, which was great. I haven't been down there in quite a few years, actually, uh, missed it the last couple. But, um, I was one of the participants that he got to serve a, a frosty cold beverage to. Um, so did enjoy myself down there. Uh, got to see a lot of people. It is great to see a community actually come out and, uh, support each other on such an event like that. Um, the other meeting I had this week, or past week was with Cal Water. Um, they just kind of wanted to do a quick meet and greet. Um, very informative. It was great to actually sit down and talk with them. Uh, with being as part of the fire department and, and then going into that meeting, it was kind of interesting to hear them talk about, uh, you know, how they control water flow for hydrants and things like that to, uh, serve the city, uh, in the case of an emergency, um, and how they monitor all that on their screens and everything else. Um, they did ask, um, and provided me an informational and piece of snippet, uh, regarding their rates and how to understand how they come up with them. And they did show some interest in possibly during one of our meetings, coming in and doing a quick presentation on how to do that. They said it's a pretty short presentation, you know? Um, and, but I think it'd be something great for, uh, people to kind of understand. I know that, um, I've heard some rumblings about Cal Water rates and things like that. Um, but there's one thing that you always see on the streets of Willows and that is a Cal Water, you know, vehicle somewhere fixing or working on something. They're always out and about. Um, so it was a pretty interesting to learn about that and how, uh, you know, Willows deals with a lot of, uh, chromium in our water and how new state regulations are affecting that and how that's affecting our rates and things like that. Um, they also talked about, and they have helped with events in our area. They helped put on, um, Marty, City Crawl, thank you. The City Crawl, um, they helped with that. Um, they discussed having a, they have a water trailer.
Yeah.
Not very unlike Rotary's beer trailer. That's actually what they compared it to, um, that they can bring to events. Um, and so I discussed with them, you know, maybe putting them in contact with Lamb Derby to have, you know, maybe that stationed down at the park as well, um, to provide, you know, drinking water.
They brought it to National Night Out last year too.
Did they? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we were just, we just discussed how they kind of help with that in cases of emergency, how they do bring bottled water and things like that around. So they do have a lot of avenues. Um, he said, we try and stay like we're a small town, small town business, but really we're a, we're a large corporation that, you know, tries to stick with that small town feel and we're here to help out everybody. Um, and so if there's ever anything that we need to reach out and see if they have a way to offer to help. So, um, it was good information, it's good people to meet. So other than that, that's all I really have for my report. And with that, we will go to city manager Brown.
Uh, if you join Rotary, you could meet Tavis, who is our district director at Cal Water all the time. He's, he's on Rotary, uh, along with myself.
He does that.
And the vice mayor. So yeah, he's there. Um, I just want to reiterate what, um, Joe said, just because I have an opportunity, which is next week's National Public Works Week, May, Thursday, May 22nd, 11 to one lunches on us, burgers, waters, something sweet. Um, from 11 to one Rotary Club will also be, well, the city will be hosting Rotary Club also during the same timeframe. And, um, Joe Bettencourt will be presenting to the Rotary Club on all things public works, capital projects, infrastructure, everything. And both this, as well as the cleanup that council member Pride mentioned, will be in the upcoming May newsletter. That'll be coming out probably later this week or, or definitely at the very beginning of next week at the latest. That's it for me. Thanks.
Perfect. After that, we have item 11, closed session pursuant to government codes, sections 549, 54.3. The public will have an opportunity to directly address legislative body on the items below prior to the council convening to closed session. Public comments are generally restricted to three minutes. Uh, closed session items will be conference with labor negotiators, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, as well as public employee performance evaluation. Is there any public comment regarding closed session items? Okay. With that, we will convene into closed session at 8:37.
Hold on, we're about to hit the. Okay.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Returning back from closed session at 9:56. We'll let our city attorney do the report out.
Uh, thank you, mayor. Uh, the council met on three items in closed session. First item was a conference of labor negotiators pursuant to government code 54957.6. Agency designated representatives were Marty Brown, city manager, and Andrew Platt, city attorney. The employee organization was confidential employees, UPEC, FIRE, and the general bargaining units and management. And the report out is direction was given to staff. Second, uh, closed session item was a conference of legal counsel, anticipated litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9B, uh, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to that subs, to subdivision, one case. Uh, the report out was direction given to staff. And the final item was a public employee performance evaluation pursuant to government code 54957, title, library director, and the report out is direction given to staff.
Perfect. Thank you. We thought we will close the meeting at 9:57. Everyone, have a good night.